Okay, it's seven o'clock, I'm gonna open up the Planning Board, um, February fifth meeting. Um, I don't think there's anything on this right here. We have, um, Tim Reardon's bond on, on September.
Yes, he's requested another bond reduction as it's been reviewed and approved by Great Engineering for a bond reduction of nineteen thousand and forty-one dollars. Down to an amount of one hundred and nineteen dollars, one hundred and ninety-eight dollars. He still has work to be done, he's continuously working on it, currently working on it as of this week. So, he seems to be taking care of everything, so we'll just focus on mine, so. So, I would recommend that they find definitely.
Mike, you want to, you could do a look at this?
Yeah, so this, this estimate reflects some trees that've been planted. It also has a few adds, there's some curbing that is replaced, and I was just browsing through. And some more on the seat that needs to be touched up. So, a little minus on all of that.
Questions for the board? Do I have any, if, do I have anybody else, any of the residents that need to want to talk about this?
Any commentary?
Oh, okay. Any update on the streetlights that are going? Any update on the streetlights? Have you talked to?
Um, last time I knew, we still hadn't gotten in contact with National Grid. He knows what he has to do, but there, I guess they're very difficult to get ahold of. So, last time I spoke to him, I didn't. But I actually tried to reach out to National Grid, and they don't call back, they don't answer the phone, they don't call back. They are very difficult to get ahold of, so.
Remember there was that little issue where the, the, they were buried, like the?
Yes.
Except, is that all taken care of now? Is that?
I believe Mike can speak to that.
To the station center for that?
I never reviewed it.
I've been told that conduits are in place for where the streetlights are supposed to go. There's no bases in the ground yet. Um, there's no part of the streetlight, I was only being told the conduits are there. And I haven't seen them myself, whether they're buried. But the crossing, he tells me the crossings have been done, and the convoys are run to where the lights are supposed to be.
So, next time we get another reduction, we need to just double check that. I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable this is a small amount, and just remember that was kind of like the concern.
Well, I do agree, because if, if something hasn't been done, and, God forbid they gotta dig up a portion of the road or something, because we don't know what's out there, and we don't, we're not holding enough, we don't own money to shoot something like that happen. I mean, we're taking it word, the work has been done, but we haven't been able to verify it. We'd better hold the money until we're sure that the work, the conduits are in place.
How about the retention points? I know there was an issue with the easement, the, the pond that's on the opposite side of Hemmon Hill Road.
Uh, we actually, um, we did verify, there is an easement on that property, so it's a legal easement, um, out of property. Wasn't aware of it, I don't know, but there is an actual easement filed, we had these for that property. So, they were, men that were working over there were working within the easement area, and so.
All right, great, thank you. Want to make a motion to approve the bond reduction?
Second. On my favor?
Aye. The second portion of that too is, uh, just a little time. He, uh, because the work has not been completed, Mr. Reardon has asked for an extension for one year for the subdivision approval. We all hope it will be this year, but his extension would be until February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
Is he on target for the town meeting to get the road approved?
I don't believe he's shooting for the spring, I think he's looking more for the fall. Because I, I don't think he could make the spring if he wanted to.
Even if, even if spring starts tomorrow, it'll likely pop up.
Is there a comment? I have a comment, DPW Superintendent Jerry Foskett. In discussions with Mr. Andrade and Randy, and going through the plan, one of my responsibilities is the streetlight on all these. Uh, I understand there's a, let's just use the word oversight, lack of a better word. It doesn't call for a streetlight at the Hemmon Hill intersection, which is very dangerous. Uh, I'm just interested to know what the planning board's intentions are to address that, that oversight? And I hope there is something, because when, once we own it, everybody's gonna be looking at me. And I'm gonna be spending you folks' money to do something that I feel should be done now. I mean.
They're, I think, they called for three streetlights in that subdivision, correct?
Not one in the intersection.
Yeah, actually we called for, you're correct, no, four.
Four.
Four, there's only three on the plan, am I correct, Mike?
The plans show three, we're talking about a fourth at, at Hemmon Hill.
At the most.
Yeah.
But, impact.
I guess the question would be, how, how tough would it be for the one, if you enter the subdivision off of Hemmon Hill Road, that first light for your head, how long, how tough would it be to just run up, break down the street easily?
It's our understanding, if it's on existing pole, that National Grid will actually do it at no cost to the developer, so there's absolutely no reason that Mr. Reardon couldn't have that done at the same time as his other streetlight. It would be no cost to him, National Grid's already gonna be there. So, I think that Mr. Reardon might not be satisfied with that, but I think that we should hold the final approval and everything to make sure, to ensure that light gets put in at the Hemmon Hill. I've been there myself, and it is a dark area.
I think you'd have to put a work order, a work order in with National Grid.
Right, but they, they're going to have to come there at some point anyway, so.
But just holding him responsible to do it, it's not gonna make the light go up, you know? We have to be proactive, but.
So, let's.
Well, that's, I have tried to reach out, that's part of the reason why I tried to reach out to National Grid.
So, let's, um, make sure he gets this in writing.
Yes.
So, let's make sure we send a, a, you know, a fancy letter, a hidden mail saying that we want that done, it's not gonna be any additional cost, and he needs to coordinate the National Grid stuff as, as part of, and that the rest of this will not be released if that isn't done.
And I was stra-
No, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, and I would stress it was for the safety of this subdivision as well as Hemmon Hill, um, and that's why we're requiring it.
Just, just so it's, just so it's in ready and it's clear, and he has, you know, if he's not gonna come back until late spring or whatever for the next reduction, then he has plenty of time to be able to work on National Grid to take care of it.
And our subdivision regulations do require a streetlight every intersection, so, I mean, we're well justified to require it to be done.
What does this current subdivision, uh, run out?
Well, that's, we're requesting extension till next year. So, it actually runs out, um, on the fifteenth of this month, so.
It's emergency, we're giving that now.
We have, we have enough in, to hold all this head, so we're pretty safe with that bond to make sure that that, that happens.
If I could just, another recommendation only. Uh, the pole that's existing is roughly forty to fifty feet beyond the subdivision intersection, and it's actually not in the side of the intersection that it should be on, because of the bad null that comes to that, that new road. I understand that would not be free for him to have to install a pole. I'm just giving you my perspective on the safety issue. I don't think Mike or the board would be happy to see a light on the pole and justify it as meeting the conditions of the light bylaw for safety. It really needs to be a new pole installed and a light put on it. Relative to a comment I heard just a minute ago in the, uh, the cutting down of the bond, which isn't my prerogative to speak on, I didn't feel it had a, had anything to do with it. There was mention of the conduit that may or may not be in the ground, in a discussion that I had with National Grid. The representative of National Grid, they have told me that if it's in the ground and it was never inspected, they would not consider that in the ground. So, he's up against a, a lot over there for that. If he has inspection reports when it was put in by the previous developer, he's, he's probably looking pretty good. I'm really concerned about the lack of the one on Hemmon Hill, and based on my knowledge of subdivision work and typical work, I would have assumed there was at least conduit coming out of the ground, at the very least, but probably bases already set in. As Mike said, they're not there. I just wanna voice my concern. It needs to be addressed, that's, okay, that's, that's all I'd have to add to that.
My concern is the fifty-four hundred dollars we're saving, we're holding back for that, it's not gonna be nearly enough if the new conduit's made to divide it. The road needs to be cut or pushed, to get something in there.
Now, we were at the point of pulling this bond a while ago, so we've, we've come pretty far, but can you, Randy, could, um, we could probably formally vote, be aggressive, send a, a, the letter and say that the regs, the regs say that needs, one needs to be on the corner and figure it out. Because we won't release the, we won't release the rest of the hundred thousand, hundred and twenty thousand if it's not done.
Okay.
We, um, so we, I don't want him coming back to us saying, you know, "Well, you never said us, we just put it in writing, so we have a date," and that'll be the.
And just because it was an oversight doesn't mean that it's still not the law, the art of the law in Charlton is the letting law. So, just because it wasn't noticed as the developer, he should have noticed it, um, he should have included it, and just because we didn't do it doesn't mean we can't do it now, because it needs to be done, yeah.
It was in regulations at the time of that subdivision.
Yeah, it was in.
This isn't.
I just meant it wasn't on the plan, right.
Do we want to vote on that one? I don't know.
I don't, do we need to?
No, no.
No.
Whatever.
You have to vote on the extension if you want to grant that.
Make a motion that we extend the subdivision plan for one year.
Second. On my favor?
Aye. February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one.
To February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So, we have a public, is this a brand-new public hearing?
This is.
In accordance with section MGL forty-one, section eighty-one P in the Charlton Planning Board Subdivision Regulations, section three, point three, point four-two, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February fifth, two thousand and twenty, at seven PM in the Planning Board Office, um, in Charlton, Mass. On the application of Paula Skoda Living Trust, um, two thirty-two Stafford Street, Charlton, Mass., oh one five oh seven, requesting approval of a definitive subdivision plan. The proposed subdivision consists of four lots in a roadway area with a cul-de-sac four hundred and sixty-two point eighty-seven feet in length. The application is to correct the discrepancy of the road placement as was shown on the prior definitive subdivision plan approved on October fifth, two thousand and eleven. The proposed subdivision is as shown on plans by Burton Engineering titled Saint Mary's Way Resubdivision dated January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. The property contains approximately eleven point one acres. The property ID is Assessor's Map nineteen, block C, parcels eleven point seven-five, eleven point seven-six, eleven point seven-seven, and eleven point seven-eight, and eleven point eighty, in his own agricultural.
The applicant is in January fifteenth, and like.
Good evening, I'm Paul Stilburton here. Um, the, the purpose of this is to just correct a, a survey error. We went back to try to find out what happened, and surveyors used the wrong pin when they went to stake out the road. And what happens is, I, I, you change your setup, so I didn't bring it, but I, I just, I just have a colored plan here to show the black and red. Actually, I have two of them, so I can put one over there to show you the difference between the two.
You're now high tech, and if you bring a thumb down.
Yeah, well, now I know. Two months ago you didn't have that. All right, so you could see, so in the worst case, the worst case, the bulb of the, the road was all right at, at Stafford Street, but it, it's off, it was like, the pin they used was off by three feet. So, in worst case, the bulb is thirteen feet from where it was supposed to be. Um, so we reconfigured the lots a little bit, and everything is within, you know, one lot changed by one square foot, one changed by, you know, fifty to a hundred thirty, but all of them are roughly the same. They're all over sixty thousand square feet, and the frontage has remained the same. You could see what the changes, we had to move it easy.
Now, is red new, proposed, and black is existing?
No, black is what we proposed, well, no, it's a, black is what the application's for, red is what it was required approval. And I have the prior approval here. So, we just moved the subdivision line to be centered on the road. Because when the road was taped out.
Yeah.
Scotch a little bit.
Yeah, Scotch, yeah. But fortunately, it's a minor change, so we could put the subdivision line around it. And it didn't really change anything. I mean, like I said, one lot, this, this lot one used to be, uh, that was sixty thousand square feet, now it's sixty thousand and seven square feet. You know, and that, that's the kind of changes that happened. So, we, we, we moved some lots around. This is the, like, most dramatic one, we changed this, to keep that lot. So, that's lot two is sixty thousand one hundred square feet, it was exactly sixty thousand square feet before.
Did you take a look at the plans?
Yes, I did. Um, yeah, every lot still being confined with the zoning bylaws, even with the new location. Haven't been any issues, we actually had, I just recently brought it by nature, it really has nothing to do with this about, we're gonna have to look at drainage from this property over here, they said that they're making a drainage issue over there, but that doesn't really have anything to do with this application. And actually, um, we had, this same sub, this subdivision actually has the same issues with Hemmon Hill, that the writing has not been put in on the subdivision yet, and it will have to require the same standard to have a light at Stafford Street, and Charles, within the cul-de-sac portion of the subdivision.
Out of curiosity, how did you discover the error?
Well, we have to figure out, I mean, well, we went to go do an asphalt, and we laid it on the plan, and said something's wrong. So, that's what, then we had to go dig and see, why did it happen? And, I, I mean, I could go into it, there, there are, we had monuments all over, state monuments, and they picked a monument on the property store, which was recently put in, it wasn't on our subdivision plan, and where we put that pin was in the wrong place, so.
Just curious.
Laziness. And fortunately, they're not with us anymore, so that's a good thing, so. I don't have to fire somebody. It just worked out.
Do we have any other questions for the board, um, questions from the audience?
I, I wanted to speak to the drainage issue, is there, is this now the time to do that? I'm Gene Miller, this is my wife Karen. We live at Three Timberbelly Drive, which abuts the, the property.
Lot, you know, that's lot number two, so it's Karen.
Number nine.
Right.
Yep. Okay.
Uh, this is at a much lower elevation than the property that they're doing the development on, and we just wanna make sure that we don't have a drainage issue during construction or post-construction. But there was a drainage issue many years ago, we just wanna make sure that we don't have one coming up.
Do you currently have a drainage issue?
No, no, it was solved years ago.
I mean, during construction, they'll, they'll have their.
Yeah, they would have to provide a plan, you know, doing what, if one's located, how, any other improvements on the property, and at that time, plan would be reviewed.
Okay.
Okay.
To ensure at least.
Because there's a ridge where the water runs down, the way the.
So, that would be done when a house plan is prepared, and we'd have to address it then. Because until a house is built, there's not gonna be any change.
Right, okay. And now, will there be another meeting once the plans are put in place?
Typically, no, not when, when it's just Department for a Single Family Home, it's not required to have a public meeting, everything. It does go through the town, you know, the proper departments within the town. It's really on, the onus is on us to ensure that, you know, whatever somebody's proposing, that it meets regulations.
Okay.
And when the original plan was reviewed, usually there's much more of a detailed review, but this already went through the stormwater, and this already went through, the engineers looked at it, um, probably, looked at it, and we, we looked for any, any stormwater issues. And if, obviously, they had any wetlands, it went next door, so it actually went through a more formal review, this is just kind of that edit. So, don't think that we're not, you know, we're just kind of approving as is, this did go through the formal, formal hearings and stuff.
Okay.
When, when was it originally approved?
Two thousand and eleven, you said?
Okay. October.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Do we have a?
I'll make a motion to approve the changes.
We gotta, we gotta close the public hearing, please.
Sorry, um, do we have a motion to close the public?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second. On my favor?
Aye.
So, has any of this work started on the road going in, and is the road, the road's been built?
So, other than, we talked about the light, right? So, we wanna make sure that, that the other changes, and the condition is that a light?
Right, he places it in section of Stafford Street.
Our clients are here, so.
Actually, in, in the last approval, we were not only required to have a light at the end of the cul-de-sac, we were also required to have a light at the intersection with Stafford Street.
Okay.
So, that's already part of the approved plan, so that's gonna be built out. I gotta get together with Jerry to find out what kind of lights we can use, and then.
Ted, was that light, is that light installed on the utility pole? There was some discussion about that.
Yeah, it was supposed to, one was supposed to be installed on the utility pole at Stafford Street.
Right.
The other one is a self-standing.
It's not. What, what is? It's not. I thought, I, when I was over there, it appeared, it looks like an LED light at Stafford Street, that is not a light on a bar sticking on the pole.
Uh, we don't have any lights currently.
Okay, there is not a light.
There, there's not a light.
Right, right, okay.
I do, if I could.
Yeah.
Is this discussion relative to the acceptance of the road, the, is the public hearing for the acceptance of the revised plan still open? My comments aren't really pertinent to that.
We closed the hearing, but.
Yeah, we can have discussion amongst ourselves, but always in for from town officials.
We want your input.
Okay, I, I just want it to be at the right time.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's really not, I have nothing to add to the acceptance of their revised plan, that's, that's fine, I'm sure Mike's, obviously, uh, no, that's not the right word. I've had a discussion with Mike and Randy over my concerns for the paving of that subdivision, and I, I think they have. I, I haven't had a chance to revisit with Mike, I had a long discussion with him this week. Uh, I don't know if you went over there, Mike, and took a look at it?
I did on the way over here, but I haven't seen it from the daylight.
Okay, so, so you haven't seen it?
No, not really.
All right, so, that kind of, I'm not where I would be comfortable at. I, alls I'll say is I have my real concerns on the application of the asphalt in that road. Actually, it goes deeper than that, it goes against my regulations for road reconstruction. Ultimately, what I'm saying is I think if we would accept that road, we'd be accepting a, a road that is not properly built. And I think it's very concerning, I think the board needs to know that before any further actions taken. I'm not sure this is the place, I know this is probably a concern to the owner, and because of.
I was gonna suggest maybe we get together with the owner.
No, well, it's nothing that, well.
We're not here for that yet, but yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
You should get together with the owner and get it before he comes back.
If, I wanna do it the right way, I don't wanna offend anybody in any way, but I want the planning board to be aware of it before it's posted on the warrant for the public, you know, town meeting, and I have to get up there and speak there. I don't believe that's the place, this is the place.
Here, you can talk to him.
I'd like the discussion to involve the oversight engineer also, I would, I think that would be the proper way.
Okay.
Set up a meeting.
So.
So, this is to approve the subdivision plan and changes, not the subdivision?
Not the road.
But we have to recommend the, we also recommend the acceptance.
Yeah, we have to.
When the time comes.
We have a request to.
So, when that happens, just, that's something that everybody should, you'll be aware, you're aware of that, when, when that comes, and you'll want that, um, that.
Sure, it'll be addressed by that time.
If you could address it before.
Well, yeah, I don't have to be involved in that part, but we'll, we'll talk, our clients are here, they heard, we'll, we'll try to gather, get a meeting going.
Do we have a motion to accept the changes?
I'll make a motion to accept the changes as soon.
I'll second it.
On my favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, thank you very much.
We didn't have to sign those? It was a whole new subdivision hearing.
You do.
Check them with me.
It's a subdivision, and it was a brand-new hearing, so.
Yeah, it'll cover it.
Yes, thank you.
Tapping trees where? Here?
I'd rather go to church.
It's a lot of work.
It's a ton of work.
It gets cheaper.
It is, it is. You ran so fast, you wanted to get rid of us. We have a continued public hearing for Zero Point Development LLC, the modification to the approved, um, site plan on Osgood Fitzgerald Road, there's two of them, so this one will be the discussion first on Osgood Fitzgerald.
Madam Chair, may I speak, please?
Certainly.
I would like to ask your indulgence to accept my apologies for not communicating correctly with this board. It was not my intention to usurp the authority of this board or any other board in the town of Charlton. Rather, I was working with an applicant to find a safe place for them to put equipment. When they came to me and asked if they could put those battery units on-site, the choices were either leave them on a trailer and sitting in the mud, sitting on the ground in the mud, or on a suitable flat surface for them to be. The sites do not have electricity to them at this point, and those units are not active. And it was made clear to the applicant, first in writing, when I allowed them to put the concrete pads in, that it was at their risk. And unfortunately, I cannot find any documentation, but I did tell the applicant, when they asked if they could bring those on-site and place them there, it was at their risk, and that the planning board had yet to decide whether it was going to be a site plan modification or a full-blown hearing, which this board has, after Fire Department's recommendation and my recommendations, decided that a full hearing was needed, and that process started sometime in November. Thank you.
Actually, the Osgood Fitzgerald site, the application is being heard by the Conservation Commission because the placement of the new batteries is in, within the hundred-foot wetland buffer, so we will have to wait to hear what the Conservation Commission reporting assistance made of this board. Primarily, the big concern with that site, aside from waiting for that, is the board really needs to determine what we're going to be charging for decommissioned bonds on these. Laurie Deggman, President Solar Expert, has given me a lot of information over the last couple of weeks, and, um, what I can say is towns are all over the place with this, but it seems to be a standard that they charge a, you know, this is based on, like, the panels too, it's a hundred thousand dollars per megawatt. However, that typically hasn't been including batteries, and batteries are a new thing. We have a lot of towns are actually watching to see what happens in Charlton, because they all have the same questions as we do. One of the things, we, we've been reviewing, um, all the decommissioned bonds on all the various solar facilities in town, and I can tell you, uh, just based on what I read with these bonds, I, I have a big concern with surety bonds, and the reason why is these suffer a number of years, twenty, thirty years, however long they are. Um, one is even when they build up in increments over years, somebody has to keep track of that. And second of all, with a surety bond, it's all finding good that we have the, the paperwork in place, but at the time. but at the time, at the end of the life of the solar field, should the solar company walk away, the property owners like, you know what, I can't afford to deal with this, now the town's left, for lack of a better term, holding the bag. And if now the town has to get somehow legally go onto a private property and clean up potentially, you know, a large project, costly project, and potentially even hazardous materials, is that going to be legal costs that the town are going to incur twenty years from now to even be able to do that? A cash bond will ensure the money is here at the town hall, so if, if it's required, one, it probably more assurance that somebody's going to take care of it, so the town does not have to, because they get their money back if they do. And I know it's a large sum of money, but second of all, the town's not going to incur even more cost, potentially legal cost twenty years from now on trying to deal with a surety bond. Because all these bonds, if you read the language in them, we do have the authority to, you know, if certain things aren't done, everything we call it in, well, now we've got to get an attorney involved.
Yeah, it costs money to be able to draw down, and then, and then it's time, you know, so we'll, we'll pay for an attorney to pull down the bond that's already very small and might not even cover.
The attorney.
The, the.
Yeah, exactly, that's.
We, um, and now it seems as though the estimates for these, um, the, the, the takedown amounts for the actual solar fields, never mind the batteries, are just, we're, we're, we're probably twenty-five percent of what the, the estimates seem to be running and what other towns are doing. And if you're watching what other towns are doing, um, not that we have to follow what other towns, but have been lucky enough to be on a lot of the roundabout communications, and they're talking, like our bonds are like forty-eight thousand, and they're talking a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty, some, I, I saw a number as big as four, um, going around. Because these, these, people don't recycle these batteries and these panels, they're, we're, we're giving them value, recycle value, but there's really, they're, it's, they're actually toxic, so instead of them paying us, we're going to be paying them to take them. We just need to make sure that we don't put any undue liability on this town, and the, the landowners too. It, it's only going to hurt us if the landowners stock with property that has more, you know, um, toxic materials on it, and to the point where they might say, just take it, it's not even worth it at this point. We need to kind of pay attention to all that, so all of this new information helps us get to that point to at least have a, a reasonable conversation to figure out what the town of Charlton needs to do for this stuff.
Yeah, the disposal recycling for panels, this, this Deegan has provided this information for werecyclesolar.com, it's the numbers for, per panel cost for a silicone panel is twenty-five dollars. Cadiums, cadmium, is that how it's pronounced, I'm sorry, uh, panel, is fifty-two dollars per panel. And then you add the number of panels that are on, so that, that's a large number when you begin to end. And then that doesn't even include the battery itself, which is a whole nother issue.
Yeah, that's.
And that's just getting rid of the panels, and then you have all the mounting, you know, all the equipment go with site restoration. I mean, it ends up being a large number.
Well, and that's with the knowledge we have now, what happens in five years when we discover that you can't get rid of them this way, but you have to get rid of them this way, and now it's twice as much money. So we're working with the knowledge of right now, twenty years, twenty years is a long time.
Yeah, that's solar, too.
And on the same note, if it went the other direction, where they find a way to do it, they could always come back to the town to have the bond reused, just like we've done with, um, the subdivision.
Mm-hmm. With all of a sudden, the technology says, right, that, that these are, these could be now used for something else. And so our little issue is that we have all these solar fields, thirty, soon to be thirty, and we, our bonds are all too low. We can't, our bylaws, I mean, we looked very, we looked to see, could we just all of a sudden call them back in and say, we told you forty-eight, now we want it, we want two hundred from you. We can't do that.
Changed our minds.
We can do the small, you know, small percentage. So a good, maybe, if, when batteries are the new trend, everybody wants to do them, that's where the future is. We're reading about just like solar farms that aren't solar, they're just all, they're like pretty much battery farms. Where we can fix all the mistakes we made with the bonds on the solar by how, when you, when applicants come in who already have their fields for batteries, we can now use that as, as a method to increase these bonds to kind of fix.
Sure.
Our lack of knowledge and from the past.
Were these original bonds just calculated on, on, um, labor only to remove the, the panels? Or were they actually just, just for labor, not?
Recycling, I mean, we actually, I think we got a little bit back for recycling, and we're not really sure that that's a true number. And nobody, everybody, it was a kind of like a new, and nobody really had a lot of actual evidence, and.
I would think you want to keep the batteries separate from solar, because batteries are being installed at grid sites and other sites, not linked with solar.
Thank you.
Now, this is a.
Are installing batteries for backup for their integral processes that they need to, need to have if the power goes out, so that, that could be for the lots there, you know. And we want to kind of, batteries are used all over industry, similar to what's being installed in solar.
So we're going to, it's probably something that we're going to also have to look at with our, with our zoning in general.
Now, I, this, this document I found was supplied to me by the applicant today. It was basically a number they got for the, uh, transportation recycling of the batteries now. One thing I have to point out here, this is the actual batteries after their palletized. Somebody's got to take them out of the box, somebody's got to put them on the pallet, get them ready to ship, and then they have to be shipped to wherever. The applicant says that in the original, um, decommissioned bond, the information's in there such as getting rid of the box, the battery, disconnecting the electric from it, removal of cement pad. I looked at the decommissioned bond, I don't have that information, so I don't know, I don't see where those numbers are included in that, so. And then we have site restoration, so this is only talking about the, the actual batteries after they're taken out of the unit, palletized, then the palletized batteries are shipped to this recycler, which is only a portion of the cost.
So then you probably need someone who deals with like, like special, this, probably, I couldn't go and take the batteries, though. You probably need somebody who's trained in that.
Yeah, shipping is going to be expensive too, I mean, these are not light little tiny things.
Right, and then this, I mean, the, the batteries themselves, I'm sure once they're all removed from the box, the, you know, it's much smaller and everything easier to ship, but it's still the actual box and all the equipment, you know, it's sitting there, what happens to that.
So the other estimate that we had that we saw at, not, maybe not the last meeting, or maybe we saw that, that Laurie had given us, I, um, I don't have Jean's estimate, normally she has like all the documentation and all the paperwork to hand me when I don't have anything, so. I know that that number was much.
I have it here, if I could interject, Madam Chair. If you remember, we requested an SDS sheet from Zero Point, so I could get the quote, it wasn't provided. So they used the SDS sheet from Sterling, Sterling's Battery. Some of the new batteries are produced cheaper, it actually costs more to recycle, there's less in there that they can use. So this, uh, quote that I have for a hundred and twenty-five thousand per container of lithium ion was based on the SDS sheet that I had at the time. We needed actual manufacturer's information and the makeup of the battery to get a proper quote.
Can I ask a question? I don't know if you have the answer to this question. Is that, would they just take the whole container and, or are they actually dismantling the batteries out of the container?
They had it, it was quoted as if it was put in something to be transported, so.
The whole container?
Now, that's something else, there's different containers of, that hold the batteries, and I have a few written down. There's a difference in that as well. So they needed the weight, is what they went off of, and the chemical makeup of that battery.
So if that was a different battery than this, what prevents the, the owner of the field from replacing a better battery with a worse battery?
Absolutely, absolutely a huge risk.
We need to go with worst case.
We need to be as conservative as possible.
Madam Chair, may I, may I comment? Uh, Harold Reader, um, here with ZBT Energy Solutions as the applicant. So I know there was a lot of discussion, it seemed, uh, that what was just being spoke about was kind of broad, about, um, solar projects in general in town. I would like to try to just kind of focus on, uh, the two projects that we have in front of you today. Uh, it is a site plan amendment, this is the third meeting that, uh, we are here in front of the planning board for this, the application of the site plan amendment. At the last meeting, um, the town did provide a, a quote for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollar estimate for a battery, like you just said, from Sterling. So I had reached out to the same company and provided the MSDS sheet and the specs for the batteries that are currently, um, uh, being proposed to be amended on the site plan, uh, and came back with a, with a cost of forty-eight thousand dollars. Randy's correct, that is, um, being palletized and removed off-site, and includes shipping in that number as well. And the application before the approved site plan did include a decommissioning value, which was approved by the board at the time. So again, I, I guess I would like to just say that, you know, try to, um, focus on the value of the, of the battery, which seemed at the last meeting, that was kind of where the discussion was headed with providing a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for disposal of the battery, and obviously, I, I provided, um, that cost as well with the actual MSDS sheet of the battery. So, um, I, I would like to, again, just say that there was a value that was approved for the decommissioning of the entire project as a whole, which included the solar panels, the racking, um, the grading of the site. And that also included the demolition of the concrete pads, and then, uh, the piece that I guess was missing was this component of removing and, um, recycling of the, of the batteries, and that's the additional forty-eight thousand that I provided there in the proposal, so.
I'd like to point out that the original decommissioning amount included the removal of the panels, but no disposal costs of the panels, that's huge. And, and we know you can't reuse the panels, it's not allowed second-used panels to go. So we have to assume that there's going to be a disposal cost. And then the commodity market of the recyclables, like the racking system and all, um, at annual town meeting, we voted that no salvage amount be used in total. And that's just to protect us, it's not to stick anybody. But with commodity markets, we don't have the, the personnel to spend every year going back and revaluing. So again, this is an insurance policy, it's not, you know, there's some cash upfront, whatever you guys decide, but the disposal and recycling costs should not be in there, and recycling costs money, so that's why that is so low.
How many panels does it, is it?
Um, I don't have the exact number, it's a, for this project, it's a four and a half megawatt project. Again, I, I wasn't, uh, prepared to, I guess, speak about the decommissioning of the entire project.
Eighty-four hundred?
What's that?
Eighty-four hundred?
Eighty-four.
Okay. And I would just add too, that, I mean, the, the value, uh, there is value in those modules there. You know, the components are breaking down, and you can, uh, there is resalv, resalvage value in, in those components. And again, that was a, an amount that was previously approved by the board, and I'm here to, I guess, talk about the additional amount for the, the batteries themselves.
Yeah, we, we, that's what we were talking, and we can't, um, on the actual plant itself, we're waiting for conservation, so we really are, the big focus right now is to figure out this bond amount, and, um, talking about it in general, just, everybody's treated the same, so we're talking about it in general because you guys kind of set the precedent here. That's why this, that's why this discussion has to kind of take place.
What did you say the recycling cost was per panel for?
That's what I did, if it was at fifty-two dollars a panel, it would be four hundred and thirty-seven dollars, a thousand eight hundred dollars for, for eighty-four hundred panels for, it would be two hundred and, if I did it right, two hundred and ten thousand dollars for twenty-five dollars a panel.
So we're talking about a hundred thousand dollars per megawatt? That's how they calculate it?
I think, remind me, North Brookfield is, they, they changed, actually, they put it in their bylaws, right?
Westbrookfield.
Westbrookfield, and it got approved by the AG for how much per megawatt?
A hundred thousand dollars per megawatt, and that's just for the panels.
And that's, that's kind of a.
And that's cash.
Yeah, that's what the recycling cost would be, the disposal cost.
The disposal.
No, no, I know we're talking about batteries, but.
It, it, this is when we could correct that.
This is how we would, right, by having a higher cost on, because technically, we're reassessing the whole solar farm again. They're, they're, with a modified site plan, it opens everything up, so we can, we can, we, we can legally now, now.
Why would you do that if that battery was not associated with a, a solar farm?
We would have to, we would have to also know what we're, we're doing.
So, so I think we're looking at twenty-five thousand per megawatt or per, for the batteries, and then, and, you know, so
that'll bring us about to, per megawatt a field for the batteries, that would be about a hundred fifty thousand, which is about the estimate we got.
Per battery?
Well.
For Conex.
Yeah. Megawatt output.
So the number you gave us was for the cycle, and the battery was one hundred and five.
Yes, that was.
And that's not including shipping, and.
Well, yeah, not any labor, but.
Just for the battery. So if we come up with a, a value of one twenty-five per megawatt to include batteries, if they want to put batteries on there, that, that would cover us for the batteries on, for the.
Shall we do it, what the battery can store, doing the bases on the size of the battery for storage? So you wouldn't have to do anything different, if somebody else put it somewhere else, that would be the storage instead of that. I mean, how, how much, how much power is this battery going to store? How much is your storage?
The sites for this one is four and a half megawatts, the batteries hold about, uh, fifty percent of the capacity of the.
So say two megawatts.
Yeah.
So a battery, a battery recycling cost, let's say a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and twenty-five plus shipping plus labor plus everything, we're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand.
Madam Chair, may I just?
Can I just speak? It's just, and that's just a battery. And so if we were to, if we're talking specifically about this, um, Osgood Road, and it's four megawatts?
Four and a half.
Four and a half, so we, we take that four megawatts, a hundred thousand dollars per megawatt, you have four hundred thousand, plus you have a hundred and fifty for the battery, and that's.
One twenty-five?
One.
So if we do one twenty-five per megawatt, that would cover, uh, any disposal costs?
Include, that would be the whole entire, because now it's one facility.
And the panels that it, it, sure, it supports.
That's, so, does that make sense to everybody, those, those numbers? I know they're big numbers, but it's, it's.
They might be big numbers.
But we're, we're backing them up by, we're, we're, first of all, backing them up, the AG already approved that, so, um, that's, I mean, that's a good, a, a, a good way to, you know, set our, you know, wine and the sand there, right?
If the Attorney General approved it, I mean, why reinvent the wheel?
And if we have an estimate for one twenty-five, um, you know, a professional company isn't going to just fill numbers, it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's a pretty decent size.
I, you have to look at the protecting the town, I mean, we're looking at this, if, if they do everything they said, they get their money back plus interest.
Right.
I know it's for a long period of time, but if the town ends up with this and we don't have the proper amount of money, this is a cost that the town will incur.
That's correct.
So we have to look at it from that point of view.
Yep, so we, so we have that, um, and the other piece of this that we need to think about is we talked about doing partial cash bonds, so if we do need to grab an attorney, we can easily grab that cash, and the rest can be whatever, um, I don't know if you talked to the assessor to see what, what was the, her preferred method? Which was, she, remember, um. She, what? The line of credit, is that?
Yeah. Yeah, it ends up being a bank one, uh, which is better than the surety loan.
So you have a, a, you know.
Because she is notified with somebody changes her name.
Right, so, so the town is kept in the loop, so there's no, there's no, you know, months, six months go by, we don't know that there's been, there's been a change. The, well, how, what piece, what do we feel the, the cash piece should be?
Well, a secured line of credit is as good as cash anyway, because if it's guaranteed, it's guaranteed. So if they can access it as opposed to hand it over, um, as long as the bank doesn't go out of business, you're, you're guaranteed because it is secured. If it was an unsecured line of credit, well, then, I'm sure there would be the re-review. The only concern with the secured line of credit is that the bank may review it every five years, and in ten years, maybe they don't qualify anymore. Maybe whatever security they're putting up isn't enough, maybe the business is, just isn't as vital, maybe they can't support it on a debt-to-income wise, so to totally contradict what I just said, you might have to do twenty-five percent cash and seventy-five percent secured line of credit, so at least there's some skin in the game. So at least, at the very least, we can pay for an attorney.
So like if the panels are. So, like, if the panels are valued at a million dollars today, in five years, maybe there's so much new technology there will.
Exactly.
But this doesn't have to do with the panels, so.
No, this is just-
We have the banker lady on our board, so it makes us very knowledgeable. Awesome.
And if I could, let's see, um, that cash deposit can be put in the treasurer's office by the map block lot number, because they're having a hard time, they're selling the leases so quickly, they can't quickly negotiate new bonds for the new leasee.
Right.
So, this can follow the parcel.
As opposed to follow the person.
And help the town keep track of this.
I would agree.
But that's the line of credit, because they have to-
That would allow them to do what else they can. Yeah.
Line of credit may change because of a different lease person.
And this would, so, this sets the standard for the town to drop them.
Mm-hmm.
This says that when you come in, you pretty much know your, your, your bond, based on the size, based on batteries, based on your, when you, when, because we're, we're at a max that they're, so we're not going to be getting.
Right.
Um, but we will be getting applications for batteries, and it'll be, they'll, they will know if they want to put batteries, will, will, they'll have to.
One-twenty-five per megawatt.
Alicia, can I ask you a question? Because you just made me think of something, if, so, if this project, the line of credit is with the company.
Correct.
If the company gets sold, what happens?
They'd have to, the next company would have to qualify for that same secured line of credit.
And if they don't?
Then, we're, we need cash, and we should put that as a caveat, because unless they can provide proof that they can obtain that secured line of credit, then we need proof, I mean, we need cash.
Well, I'm.
No, it's a great point, because.
No, I, because I just see like, I don't know.
Oh, absolutely.
It might be three months, I mean, some of these selling units seem to finish being built.
Exactly.
And who knows if the next company's going to qualify for it? And I mean, within three months of the project being built, now we're all of a sudden chasing somebody for money already. We forget twenty years from now.
That's right. And it can be very expensive.
I mean, it puts the town in a difficult position.
And especially while a lot of these companies aren't local companies, because a company is coming from all over, so now you're chasing companies with different laws, you're chasing Missouri, in Missouri or Arizona, it could get a lot harder and a lot more expensive.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I, so we'll make that a condition?
I would make that a condition, absolutely, because it just protects the town.
Okay, so, we are, we are not obviously voting tonight, we're waiting for conservation, we're, do we want to have any, some discussion on? So, this makes sense. Can we write up a, you know, internal planning board policy with this stuff that we just discussed?
Yes.
Does that, and then, so we get all this down on a piece of paper, and at the next meeting, we look at it on a piece of paper, and then maybe vote it in as, like we voted in, um, the requirements, um, with, when, when the fire department gave us all of their, their suggestions, we vote, we voted in like the same way, so.
Sure. Absolutely, our new protocol, that's right.
We just, so, where, you know, when someone comes in, they can be handed.
Yep. Exactly.
I think we've done a lot of work and a lot of research to figure this out, so, I think it, it covers the town.
Yes, I agree.
Doesn't guarantee anything, but does cover the town, unless prices drastically increase in the future.
Right, and that, and absolutely, in, coming from, in front of the board, they asked for a decrease or whatever, we, we've always, we're very fair that way. Discussion, any specific discussion on the actual, do you want to update us on the actual plant, the modification? Is there anything else that we need to?
For the Osgead Fistero site, no, I'm the only issue is the replacement of the battery within the wetland buckle, which that is beat out by the conservation equation, I believe, this evening.
Yeah, and other than that, it meets all our, our regulations.
I, um, actually, one other point that was brought up, and maybe from an engineering standpoint, somebody might be able to shed some light on this. Concern was brought up by a concerned resident on, is there leakage from these batteries? And should there be some sort of catch base, and something around it, on the battery, should they catch fire? And is leaking going on, or do they leak from overheating, you know, is there any?
If there's leakage, it would be a catastrophic failure of a particular battery or, or the whole thing.
Right, but, but the question is, if it did happen, if they get into the groundwater, people in the area were concerned because they have wells and, you know, potentially polluting the wells. Should there be some type of?
Does, would it help if you look at that, is that, does that bring into?
Madam Chair? I'll, I'll speak to some battery technology, I've, you know, as you know, that myself and Captain Carlson did considerable research on it. Says we were developing regulations, and I've actually now been a guest speaker, become a, a drip under pressure, really. Doing some dog and pony shows about the hazards, the way the fire department, the, the relative hazards of these compared to other like hazards and such. So, the, any battery is made up of an anode to cathode and a separating layer and some chemistry. The lithium ion technology, one of the reasons it has become very prevalent is, is the energy density. Just imagine our cell phones with a brick like this, you know, they, they wouldn't be practical, okay? Um, and, and the cost for that and the benefit to the applicant to, to sell a product. What they do is they take the, the anode to cathode, this separating material, and the lithium ion technology is almost a solid paste, okay? And you make what they call a jelly roll. So, if you thought, if you took a double-A cell, which is very similar to the cell technology that they use in lithium, you can unroll it like filo dough. And it's a, a solid paste. The issues that we've, Captain and I have dealt with is, is our, our concern about the hazard and what happens if they burn. And, and the issue of them is thermal runaway. Okay, and we've all seen the examples of that. Well, if that barrier between those anodes and cathodes break down because of bad manufacturing, abuse, any of that sort of thing, you get a short circuit internally, and then you get heat. You can overcharge them, that causes a problem. You can over-volt them, you can have all sorts of things. But the UL standard that we ask the applicants to be held to tests for the battery management system that looks at temperature, looks at voltage, looks at current, looks at the temperature differential, and it's all designed to shut them off. If they do go into thermal runaway, yes, the hoverboard's going to burn up. The current thinking from the fire service is, is we would treat these just like we would treat a feed store. A feed store has lots of chemical in it, fertilizers, all sorts of things. And the risk analysis is, is one, we're not going to hurt anybody. Two, we're going to keep it from hurting people around. And three, we're going to let it burn up, because squirting hundreds of thousands of gallons of water on it to have it run off is going to be more of a mess. Then unfortunately, yes, there will be pollution from it, but that pollution is going to be more manageable than that. So, them turning into an oozing mass, in China syndrome, leaking their not lead acid batteries, you know, which, which is an aqueous form that does have to have containment around it under the standards. And we have some facilities in town with rather large lead acid battery rooms, rooms the size of this, full of batteries. And that would be the MCI building on War Side Road, because that's a telephone technology, and it's a forty-eight volt DC technology, and that's what they use. They're low-cost, low-life, but they work for it. So, if, if there's, and I know there were some questions and, and the captain, you know, we've done research, we provided additional information to you because we did come and say a hundred feet from everything. We did say fifteen feet from critical infrastructure, and on purpose, we did not define critical infrastructure, because we have gone to the applicants and said, if you can, if you don't care if you lose it, it's not critical, okay? The NFPA eight-eight-five, which is the new standard that just came out for energy storage systems, which is beyond batteries. There are a lot of other technologies, has said ten feet separation to property lines. So, when we're down to six, when we're saying sixty-five feet to a property line is closest battery, with a thirty-foot setback to the next, on the other side of the property line, they're well within those recommendations. And, and the captain, you know, will speak on behalf of the fire department. But we, you know, worked with the applicants as we came to you and brought that proposal forward. The applicant said, can we review that and, and work with you on it? And we've been working with them over the past summer, as I indicated to you in the letter. And, and yes, some of the numbers we backed off based on what was there or what was not there, so.
Well, my feelings about the batteries is we didn't know that lead paint caused them also to damage either, and we painted everything with lead paint, and we're going to put up, we're going to, I would hate to get less conservative with something that we've realized. That's Newman technology, and we don't know what's going to happen. And we just got, we just, just got the email from Randy about the explosion and how toxic it was. Um, who knows if there's, if, if, it was looking on ion, but, so, um.
What, what explosion are you talking about?
So, we got, we got, um.
In Arizona, and what in? Surprise, Arizona, was a energy storage system in a container that did not meet the current standards. That was old technology, that was using batteries that were known to be defective, that the manufacturer sent out recommendations to anyone who had them to only charge them to seventy-five percent. Early indications is, is that investigation is showing that they were charging them more to seventy-five percent, and that there were two firmware upgrades for the control systems that hadn't been installed. What, um, one of the things, the explosion part and everything, but they, both, there was another site, and I'm sorry, I can't remember it off the top of my head, but, the toxic fumes from the burning of the battery, when they had the thermal runaway, that both Arizona site and there was another site that was in, and I'm trying to remember where the other site was. We agreed that, that these fumes are not healthy, okay? But you also, if you burn a house or burn a furniture in this room, that's not healthy either. But I mean, how is that? Burning nice. It's as bad as anything else, relative hazard.
Yeah, but if we can prevent that, if we can keep it far away.
I, I think some of the standards that are in place right now would go a long way to, to preventing those, those hazards, you know. The research that he's done, I agree with that, done safe research. And the control systems are there to shut individual batteries down, or the whole, the whole site down, to disconnect it. Yeah, there's a hazard in anything, but.
Do we know that all the controls are in place? Do we know that they're going to sell it and they're going to keep on testing, they're going to run? I mean, we don't know that stuff, so we have to just be conservative to, zero point could turn around and sell this, sell this site in three months.
It's sold.
And, um.
It's already sold.
So, so, now we have a situation where we don't know if that they're as reputable as, as these guys and.
Well, there'd be inspection every year of the, kind of be able to get inside the battery or kind of take it by word. Supposedly, there's a ten-minute, ten-minute shutdown inside of these, they have a, since the president.
So, there, um, there are two types of fires that would, would occur in these. There is a fire of the ordinary combustibles, being the plastics, the wire, the control systems and stuff. And the containers come with what's called a clean agent system, which is good for suppressing that type of fire. It's a clean agent because it's electronics and you don't want any residual, it's a chemical inhibition of the fire. If a battery was to go into thermal runaway, it is impractical because of their construction in a sealed container to get enough water on them to cool them. So, I can bring in videos, Factory Mutual, just down in Rhode Island, has burned these batteries in, in rack arrays and put a sprinkler over them. And the end result after three hours of burning was, is that the fire was contained to that battery rack. In a similar burn where there was no sprinkler system, the fire lasted a little over three-and-a-half hours and went out.
So, again, consideration about setbacks and stuff, um, the board needs to, for our, when we're, when we're looking at this plan. The other item that we need to talk about is the sound. Now that all the trees are cut down, and these things do make noise, I don't know what the, the despoils that are, is there anything that we need to do with, with that? Do you have more information that?
Well, I, I mean, we're, we probably should, the Osgead Fistero site isn't really an issue at all, exactly.
So, well.
I don't have many business, but, if we look at that.
The location of my dosia, Fistero site is far from any structures or properties.
Madam Chair, George Kritzy, my client who's here tonight, and I, a little confused about Concon's involvement, because I don't know that we have any application or anything in front of them, so, um, they may be taking it up, but I don't think we've got an application there.
You have, you're within a hundred feet of the wetlands.
Oh, I recognize what you're saying, but I don't think there's anything, I don't know what's pending in front of them, because I don't know that we have.
I know they're discussing.
They have the planning board application before that.
We, we asked them, I.
To review this, okay.
And I am under, I was under the assumption that if you're within a hundred feet of a wetland, you have to actually file with the DEP. And I could be wrong with that, um, because I'm not a ConCon specialist, but I wanted to make sure that if, now that we're within a hundred feet, that we file the DEP, and there's nothing better than we like to get the DEP involved and stuff. So, we just want to make sure that we're following all the rules with this.
That's correct.
So, the, the conservation is going to look at that, and they have their consultant in there, and they're going to figure out if that needs to happen, because if that does need to happen, that needs to happen before we, before we can approve anything, anything.
So, I know they're taking that up tonight, that's on their agenda.
Yes, on both plans, so that's, that's the issue, it's within a hundred feet of the wetlands, and they need to, again, if they need a DEP filing, then they need to do that. And if they need, if they can believe, I, I, I don't know how they actually works, but I just want to make sure that we, you know, get across all our keys with this project.
So, I'll ask Madam Chairman, is there any other information that the captain and I can give to you about our recommendations for the locations of these?
I don't think so, I mean, what you're saying is that it's the, the sixty-five versus, versus a hundred, other than, other than the wetlands issue, there, there isn't a significant increase in safety in something that we.
Well, there, there, there is no increase in danger, because the, the distance is shorted. And, and as we found, as these, you know, everyone is dealing with this. And NFPA, just after its two years of building this standard, and the, and the process they went through has come through and said ten feet from property lines is safe from the firefighting perspective.
I do have a question, and you may or may not know the answer. Is there anything currently being developed, any fire suppression materials that would take care of these batteries better than water? That could, um, because they are becoming so prevalent, because they're spreading up everywhere, is there anything being manufactured? Is there anything in production that might help this a little bit? Just for the, the safety of the, 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 um, peace of mind of a homeowner that has a budding, it might be better if there was something. And again, I, there may or may not be, but.
I, I, what I have seen in the research is, is that the key to keeping these safe is the battery management system preventing
Okay.
an, an, an incident from occurring.
Sure.
And there's a, a series of UL standards and tests, all the way down to the cell level and then up to the complete unit, which was a long discussion that we had with the applicant, because the UL test had not been performed on this complete unit. And they have offered some in-sutu testing to ensure that these components play together.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'll just add to, so these systems do have a fire suppression system built into the, to the container itself, so.
Okay, very nice.
And that was, that was the question that Mr. Smith asked, is what's there? And it is a clean agent system that does ordinary combustibles and electronics, but the thermal runaway is exactly what it's, what it is.
Who monitors that operating, like, who goes out there and says, because I'm sure that there's tests that need to be done, because.
So, it's, it's monitored by a computer system. It's in their, and they monitor their fields remotely for power output per string, per power output based on the sun at the, at that time. There's little sensors out there, so they know what the sunlight is. And the battery management systems are, are dialed in to tell them what the input, output, and everything of all of this is. The, the technology, I find very interesting, and like I said, yes. The, the technology I find very interesting, um, and like I said, yes, there, and I can show you slides of histories of series of fires in these. You know, but the techno, that's technology that's seven, five. We have a system on twenty-one Horn Homestead Road that has four battery units on it that were put in as part of the site, but they were smaller units. And that was one way they were dealing with them at the time was is keeping them small. It is now more economical to put them in a larger container with a bigger, bigger brain to them.
Makes sense.
So they don't really need to go to the site and all be checked remotely?
No, the internet connection.
If I could, I have another question. Um, can the applicant provide the town with the manufacturer of the battery? Cause they are different. And then you have a Con Edison battery storage unit, there's Merz Stark cooled containers. But the dimensions, cause the quote I got was for sixty-six thousand batteries per Sterling's. Those are things I think would help the fire department too to know if the batteries are different, then they would know exactly what chemical is in there. Cause some.
So batteries are already in, you guys have this data, this information?
All that information I've provided to the town, uh, it's been reviewed, um.
We didn't have the S D S sheet for the battery.
The S D S sheet was provided as well. And that's, so that was one of my comments too is you keep referring to the hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for that removal of the battery based off of Sterling, which was five, six, seven years ago. And the M S D sheet is based off of what's, uh, being proposed at the forty-eight thousand. So I think that's where the big difference is, this technology has obviously been improved and getting better and, um, yeah, so.
Will, can we just try to pull that information?
Yeah.
Jane, can you just pull that information and still raise that, whatever. Will.
Yeah, exactly.
We'll pull that for you.
One of my concerns too is.
We'll have, we'll do that file.
I think it would help, um, and like Dawn said.
When, when these batteries come into life, what gets replaced with them, you know, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I have no, I'm, I'm very, very pleased with the, the, the bonds and stuff. That's, that's a, I think we're all on the same page with that, so I'm not, that's not part.
It'd still be good to know.
Right, the details.
Who's the S D S sheet we, you said supplied to the town, who with the town?
We have some information, I, I would have to go back to it.
But not the planning board.
We've asked, you know, we asked for O N M manuals for when these are installed within a certain.
Planning board had requested, but we didn't get it, that's why.
Yeah, can, can somebody just get it to the planning board?
Yeah.
I know you said you'd get it. Okay. So are we going with discussion on this site? Do we wanna move ahead to the other site?
Sure.
Madam Chair, before you just go to the next one, could you, there was a lot of discussion, it was general talk versus this project. Could you just clarify the, uh, discussion you had on the decommissioning? I, I knew you threw out the hundred twenty-five thousand, was that for the solar project? Was that for the batteries? Was that based off of the old proposal, um, that, that was given to you?
We are going to, we are going to, for, for batteries on solar farms, we are going to use the calculation of a hundred thousand.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five per.
Per megawatt.
Megawatt.
And that's for the?
And that's for the whole new, since we're, we have a whole, a new site modification plan. So we're looking at, now we get, now we're re. You don't wanna stay all night, Kirk, come on.
No, I've done that, I've done that with you before.
Dennis, you're not gonna leave us too, all right? No, I don't.
That's up to him, but.
Just joking. I'm sorry, I, you're welcome to stay, we like you here. The, so now we're looking at this as a whole new modification of the whole site, not just the batteries alone. So now we, again, we have the opportunity to re, um, rebond these for the decommissioning. And so to fix our formal mistakes, we're going to.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's, the, 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 the largest portion of that is the battery anyways, so.
Yeah, so it means really it's.
It's, it's the batteries.
And there's two batteries in this one, this site or?
This site has two batteries.
So it's a, it's, so the, the whole field itself is, is four point five?
Four point five.
The project itself is four point five megawatts. That's why I was just trying to clarify.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand per megawatt.
But is that?
Is that site plus battery, site and batteries, everything that's super nuts?
I, I see what you're saying, there's an extra battery in, in the equation on this one.
About the batteries, battery storage, two megawatts.
Can I, can I speak for something? I live at Five Miles Good Road, my name is Lori Provo. So my question would be, in that particular project, how Mark Mitchell has half of the field and we have half the field. So how does that protect us? I know it's one project, but we're two separate land leases, so how's that gonna protect us and protect Mark? Does that make sense?
In a case like this, I mean, from our landowner perspective, there should be a bond on each property so that each one of you are protected. You know, so divided in half, however the equation works out, if you own half the lands, the solar fields on, then half the bond should be, based on that parcel of land, you know, Matt blocking law, and the other half be on the other parcel of land so that both landowners are protected.
So that thirty thousand batteries, is that for the whole field, that's the two trailers?
So the proposal that you had provided, or the town had provided, was a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for, uh, one container. I then had provided and updated with the actual S D S sheet for forty-eight thousand for, for one container. So I'm just, I'm confused on if you're talking about the entire project or just the battery or. I, I provided an updated sheet with the actual batteries that are on, that are, that are being proposed and you're using the old, old proposal amount. So, that's why I was just trying to get some clarification on, on the thought process on where you're getting these numbers from.
Well, they will again, the old proposal is worst case scenario, if these batteries were placed with, with a, uh, a cheaper battery or a battery that would cost more to recycle. So we need to look at worst case because we don't know what's gonna happen to these batteries as they become in the life and, and other batteries get replaced in there, so.
Yeah, I guess.
What you're putting in now, but that doesn't guarantee what's gonna be put in later.
Batteries have a.
And I think that's why a part of our, our, uh, report is that we've come to the town periodically to revise that estimate and revise the, the, the decommissioning value if it were to be.
But if, but if you sold.
Which is a lot of work for the town and I, I think you've covered up front.
Right, it's a lot of work, a lot of labor, a lot of administration. And also if you sell this in three months, you say you're gonna come back, but will the person you sell this to come back? That's what we worry about. Um, and I don't, I, I, and again, I don't think we're way out there because we, there's other towns that are up, up this high. And so we, um, we, we want to set the gold standard for our town in Charleston. So that's, um, I guess that discussion, it's a hundred and twenty-five per megawatt. Uh, we do, is that with the batteries in total?
That you covered the batteries that would, would be contained in the field that size.
That'll cover the batteries and the solar and everything. So it would be the one, are we gonna do one twenty-five point four point five? Cause it's, it's four and a half megawatts, are we gonna do a one twenty-five point four?
Yeah, yeah, which is, which is, yeah.
Yep, so one twenty-five point four point five, that would be the calculation.
And that value is based off of what?
Five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That was, that's, that balance is, is based off of an estimate that we had and what has already been approved by the A G, by the town of West Brookfield.
Okay, I just, so just doing the math, we'll give five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to bond this site as amended.
Yes, and twenty-five thousand will, um, twenty-five percent will be cash bond to the town. And the rest will be, uh, secured line of credit.
But the, I'm just, I'm, I'm very confused because the, we went from a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to remove the batteries and now we're going a hundred twenty-five thousand per megawatt for the entire project.
Well, this gives us a, a, a chance to fix our, our former miscalculation.
I mean, you, you almost quadrupled the decommissioning value that I, we originally had approved by, by you guys.
Well, if you would like the batteries, I mean, you would like us to keep the batteries and you're gonna have to deal with the new bonds. I mean, I don't know what to, I don't know what to tell you, you're complaining about the amount, but you, you, you put batteries without permission. So the, the complaining part is.
Well, I mean. I'm not, I'm not trying to complain, I was just trying to figure out the logic behind the one twenty-five.
Yes, the logic is we're trying to keep, we're trying to be, be conservative in our, um, in our bonds because we wanna make sure we keep our town safe, in case something happens.
The more research we did in, into the, into the original bond, we found wasn't sufficient to, to dispose of the, the panels also.
As this town and many other towns around us are becoming more educated on the real cost of what these fields are.
It's not just us, it's all of Worcester County.
We were led to believe that there wasn't any.
You're only talking two megawatt, two megawatts of battery capacity, correct?
That's the, the batteries, yes.
But it's based off the field they're going on.
That's the, 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 the math, the logic doesn't make sense. They're just saying it's a hundred twenty-five thousand, oh, it's per megawatt, so.
Two megawatts of battery capacity and then you've got the rest of the field.
If I had a one megawatt system, the same size battery, my bond would be one twenty-five. Even though, or even if I had tripled the batteries, I'd have one twenty-five.
Be two twenty-five.
No, because the battery, because the size of your bonding are now basically a gross amount regardless of the size of your batteries.
Well, then it should be one twenty-five for the bat, for each battery plus one hundred thousand per megawatt.
We can add, we can add more. Are you saying that you want us to add more?
No, that's not the worst idea.
I'm saying, what I'm saying is that the math isn't there.
It's fine, they're saying, they're gonna, they're putting a.
I understand what you're saying.
They're adopting a, a recommendation that all projects.
And we're just, so we haven't even approved this. We, 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 what we did say is we wanted Vanny to put it on paper so we could read it on paper and think about it. And at our next meeting, we'll decide if that's, if it makes sense, we'll, we'll all do our research and we'll all come back. So, um, not set in stone, but it's a, a good standard to discuss. And, um, seems, it seems very close to what our other local towns are, are doing. Um, I think that this standard will be set across all of Worcester County in general.
So it's a hundred twenty-five thousand per megawatt with twenty-five percent of that being cash for your surety?
Yes. And again, that's just discussion and hasn't been formally voted on or.
Be cash plus a, a secure line of credit, not a surety.
Yeah, twenty-five percent. Right, twenty-five percent in cash to our town treasurer and the remainder line of credit, secure line of credit.
So do we wanna split this property, given it two properties to look?
I think as.
Is that our, is that our responsibility to do that or is that something that the landowner should be?
I, the landowners should be really requesting that because they wanna protect their land. I mean, what hap, each landowner, they, a certain portion of that bond amount has to be free, it just happens all the time, two properties. So each landowner has a concern that they wanna make sure that their.
Didn't we get, do we get a, a sign off from the landowner on this lease to that, to, 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 to kind of let them, that they let us know that they know what their, the, the bond situation is, is that, is it?
Um, I can't, I can't speak for that from the original one, I'd have to go back and look for it before I was here.
You don't see what I'm saying? I remember, I, I forget what plan we were on when we, we had to, we actually had, it was a, a situation and we actually had to have the landowner like verify, but if, then so many, I know. To just certify that they understand the, the risks and that they're, they're covered and stuff like that. I don't know if that's something that, um.
I think it's something that should be done because I think a lot of landowners are unaware of the potential.
The batteries.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, so part of the application process to get a letter from the landowner approving that they are aware of the application being submitted and the details that are being part of the submit, the application that's being in front of you. So that letter was provided and discussed with the landowners and the.
I don't think that was the question.
The decommissioning.
The question is that landowners don't understand the true cost of.
The liability and stuff because I'm thinking that if I'm, if I'm just, uh, you know, I own a bunch of land and I'm gonna lease, I, I think, you know, yay, I'm gonna get fifty thousand dollars a, a year to lease my land, not knowing that at the end of that ten years that I might have a land full of very expensive toxic waste.
Five hundred thousand to get rid of all.
And now, I just, I mean, I, I'm not sure if that's even our.
Which we deal with in our leases and that's all part of private contract.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's just.
I'm not sure it's our problem, I'm not sure it's, it's what we need to deal with, but we need to protect the town in case the homeowner goes, take my land, it's not my problem. So that's what we're. That's what we're doing. That's what we're.
So you're saying, but we talked about like the, I, I don't, I don't, yes, what, we, we just want one bond and the landowners can figure out.
So let's look at the one twenty-five per megawatt and see if it works out for different sized fields and see if we're covered everywhere. So we will look at that and.
For a site that includes batteries.
For a site that includes batteries.
Because we can't modify anything that doesn't have batteries. I, I would suggest. I mean, in reality, if you guys remove your batteries, then we can, you, you, we wouldn't be able to modify your, your, your original bond. So that.
I, I would suggest that the, I mean, I know it's subdivision law, but I'm not gonna, I mean, that's, since we don't have a lot of guidance state on these batteries, we know that they're a priority use, but we don't know, there's not a lot of guidance on it. Bonding of it's not in any of the statutes, so let's talk about subdivision because that's a pretty well established law. You guys are planning board, you know that stuff. When it comes to, um, bonding subdivision, work as you noted, prior cases that came up tonight. We bond those subdivisions, we bond them based on the actual anticipated costs, you know, and that's, that's where they gotta bear a reasonable relationship to the actual anticipated cost. Um, it's not saying that if you take this out and put in twenty-year-old technology, it's gonna cost triple the amount. We wanna be oversight, uh, hyper conservative. I mean, the, the, the bond numbers that you have now are based on a site that's old, old technologies expensive. The ones that you got now from the same company, the ones that we submitted from the same recycling company that gave you the one twenty-five figure says it's fifty, based on these new numbers. And that's currently, these recycling is, the recycling, um, industry, if I, if that's, the, the recycling industry for these batteries, it's gonna be a gigantic demand. The price of the materials in there, these materials are very, very expensive to mine, very, very expensive to produce. A lot of work to produce a little bit of material. There is value in this material, they will recycle, they haven't got that yet, but there's huge incentives on it. There's gigantic talk federally about incentives for recycling these things because they are extremely valuable materials. The, the component, the, the minerals which they're made of are very valuable. And the reclamation of them and reusing them is cheaper than mining the materials.
Today, today.
But there's still the cost associated with recycling those.
Oh, absolutely, there is, right now. And the technology's not there and nobody's doing, to some degree, it's cheaper to dig up a, you know, the, to mine it and produce it. We see that with paper, I mean, it's, it's easier to get virgin paper than it is to recycle the, the papers. But there is an industry for it now and there will be an industry, uh, for these batteries. And so that's why I say you do revisit it, but the numbers that you do ultimately choose, whether it's, you know, it's not tonight, but whether it's the next meeting or the meeting after that, do you do it? It should be a relationship to the materials being produced or, or being offered now. These are what we're producing, was it?
Why?
Because that's what we're, that's what we're decommissioning.
But we're, we're, the bond is to protect the town from, in the future. So it's not about now, it's about the potential liability in the future. Um, if I had a fifteen-year-old computer, um, I would pay somebody to take it away. Um, this, this technology is changing so incredibly fast. Um, and if you were on ours, if you were sitting in our board and representing us, you would be saying the exact opposite than what you're saying now. So there's a balance and we're trying to be fair. Um, there isn't, there isn't, other than the twenty-five percent of cash, there's really not that much of an additional cost for us to ask for the, um, the, the insurance bond, so.
It's about seventy-five thousand dollars per megawatt, you know, per, per cadena. I mean, it, it's a hundred fifty grand. Um, it's a, it's a gigantic amount of money. Um, it may not sound like a lot of money, but it's a gigantic amount of money.
Other towns have done it.
Other towns are doing it.
Just because, just so you know, and you're talking about the attorney general approving bylaws, that doesn't mean, they, they, caveat letter at the very last line on every time they just, they're not saying that this is valid, they're saying we're gonna, we approved the, the procedures that were employed, we approved all this. You know, that doesn't mean that every bylaw that's passed, we see bylaws stricken all the time. Even though they got approved by the town, they got approved by the attorney general, they're passed, somebody Susan says that bylaw is un, is unconstitutional. Courts flip them all the time, even with the attorney general, there's no blessing on that.
Hundred and point five per megawatt is unconstitutional?
Everyone has a right to do that.
I'm just saying that.
Okay, so you know what, I think we're gonna, we're gonna run this meeting way too late. Can we, can we move on to the next? Because we're not gonna vote, we're not gonna make a decision tonight.
For the next meeting, let's get those numbers put down and, and reviewed and take a look at it and compare it to different sized fields.
And see what would, what would be the result in other fields.
Or maybe we need to kind of.
I mean, it, it's, it's a really by field, I mean, if they come in and they wanna put one battery or like the, the, you would have to make sure that we're.
We're gonna have to have some type of rule to go by, it can't be this or that or depending on this or that.
We have some of the formulas, the formula's gotta be simple.
Cause it's gotta, it's gonna be just.
Otherwise, maybe the girl's gonna, she's just trying to.
But I mean, I like, I think that one twenty-five, one twenty-five per megawatt is very. But I mean, I like, I think that one twenty-five, one twenty-five per megawatt is very, like, it's very-
It's an easy one, but, but we need to look at that number to make sure that if it's a small field with a, a big battery, we're, are we still covered, or if it's, you know?
But that, I mean, that could be tweaked.
Or, or if it's a big field with, with a smaller battery, are we, is it too high, you know, it's, it's-
But we could, actually, if, if to make attorney currency happy too, maybe we could take their spreadsheet that they provided, add the module disposal price and transport.
Need to look at that.
So instead of doing, we were trying to simplify, because like we've discussed, the battery storage unit itself is different. They have thirty thousand pounds, the one I had was fifty thousand pounds, the makeup's different, so if they, this is the long math, they provide exactly what the battery is, the dimensions of the container, the cadmium or silicone panels, and we'll just use their spreadsheet and see what it comes out to. It could very well come out to be very similar. Um, we were just trying to do a, a, probably an easier formula than dealing with thirty of these, revaluing them every year, three years or five years.
Sounds, so that sounds to come up with all of your details, every single one of them that you want to be, um, and we want, we don't want just numbers written on a paper. If you have this, then we want to see something that says it's, uh, so I'm an auditor, and I see all the time people put, throw numbers on paper for me all the time, and I say, where'd that number come from? Um, I wanna, if you're telling me that it's, you, you have X, Y, Z type of battery, then prove it to me. That's kind of documentation, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll look at and we'll see if we're being unfair or in, in any way. Again, um, I'm watching closely and communicating with all of the other, like, multiple eight, nine, ten Worcester County towns who are all having the same exact discussion that we're have, and the numbers that they're throwing out, the lowest number I found that they got thrown out was a hundred and twenty-five thousand, the highest number was four hundred thousand. And these are all per megawatt in these towns, so, um, maybe four hundred is exaggerated, but the lowest I heard was one twenty-five. In, 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 in like, in the, in like, um, in, in, as part of the discussion, so, um, I, I don't think we're, I, I, I get that the number is alarming to you, but to me it's not, because I'm, this is small compared to what.
I don't think it's that alarming, because I mean, dealing with these other towns, so these other-
With the right gentleman, it's fine.
So let's, let's, how do you feel about closing this and moving on to the next, because I'm sorry, continuing this to the next.
Um, continue.
Continue.
Once we decide, can we just let the other solar companies know this is our policy, so we won't have to have this discussion again, or?
Yep, we'll have procedures. We'll have, well, we'll have our, our guidelines with the ability of the planning board to tweak it. If we're looking at something and it's odd, it's, it's a, it's a half an acre of batteries with six trailers, we, you know, we're gonna need to be able to use common sense to be able to say, um, you know, we're really looking at about a hundred per trailer. They're not gonna have, just because they have a small, a few panels, the, again, th- this board has a lot of common sense and that can be put into the, into whatever policy we decide to adopt.
So we'll take the homework that you do and come up with-
If you get that earlier, we can maybe be ready for the next meeting.
Sure, can you get that, sum that up? And what's the date of the next meeting?
Maybe nineteenth.
Make a motion, we continue this public hearing to the nineteenth?
Second, favor.
Do we need a lot of discussion, the next one, or just continue the opening and continue the second one?
We'll just open it and continue the second one, too.
We just want to talk about the, the-
Uh, well, the second one has a little more.
Okay, so let's, let's-
We won't talk about bonds on the second one, because we, the these guidelines, we already know, megawatt times.
No more bonds, okay. How many megawatts is, is, um, well, do you want, want to open the public hearing?
So I'm going to open the, the continued public hearing for Gilpoint Development on the Colburn, um, ground bounded solar site. How many megawatts was that one? Two.
How many panels? I'm guessing four?
Oh, actually, that, that number you gave me really was for Colburn, not for uh-
Okay, what's?
Eighty, it's about eighty-five hundred.
Eighty-five hundred at?
According to solar modules.
At, at?
According to their estimate.
At Colburn?
Yes.
What, what's Ozgus?
We almost doubled that, right?
So that number became a, a tough one.
What are you doing, you're based on, you know, megawatts, so it's all math.
So while you're, you know, that, so, on-
Triple that, good.
You want to do just the, your, a, a quick update on this property?
Well, this, this project, as we know, there's a couple more issues, the flake of the battery, which was, um, posted to the property line, then what the, the original guidelines that were parameters, I should say, that were, um, submitted by the fire department, the planning board adopted. There's also the issue of clearing within the buffer between the fence area and the property line. Um, there were also issues with the easement that is bringing the power up to the road, uh, one about the area clearing, but also about the disturbance in the wetlands and that easement. Um, the conservation committee again is reviewing that application tonight. As you may or may not be aware, our conservation agent got injured on the job, so he's been out.
He was made up.
They've hired a company to do peer review, going to be up for a substantial period of time from what I understand.
Oh my gosh.
And they have found out that peer reviews cost a whole lot of money, and they have spent their budget, so now they had to, um, because they don't have a provision set up for applicants paying for peer review, which they're working on, but regardless, they had to have a discussion on, uh, decided to send the person to do the peer review out to the property in the easement area about disturbance with the wetland. If there's an issue, and if there is an issue, what to do about it, because that's within their purview. They're having that discussion at their meeting tonight, I don't know the results of it, won't know the results of it probably tomorrow.
And then again, the, the idea, so there was, it is a, a brook, um, I don't know, brook stream, and instead of going, the original plan said to go down under, so they wouldn't be disturbed. They kinda, I guess, took the excavator and went all right through.
So they didn't push underneath if they, they excavated?
They decided to cut it in half and made a little pond, is that?
Disturbed the wetlands in the buffer, the stream.
Um, so that-
Is that, you're shaking your head?
I don't believe that's accurate at all.
Either, either way, the wetlands were disturbed.
Basin disturbance.
We directionally drilled, so I mean, we went down and under.
So, so the, the wetlands were disturbed?
Yeah, they're disturbed, so, uh, their, Concom's looking at it and, um, again, another, we don't know if, if it's a DEP issue because of, because of how close they are to the wetlands, um.
Have they done that review yet? No, that has not happened.
That was at tonight's meeting.
Okay.
And they'll, I'm sure they'll update us and let us, um, no, we just want to make sure that, that, um, if DEP should be involved, they are being involved, I know that they don't have an agent over there, and we would just wanna, um, I don't want to say anybody to pose or-
So we want to show that the, these things are taken care of before we address the battery.
Yeah, and, unfortunately, because of the circumstance, they had to have their meeting to authorize, or they would have somebody go over to the property and do it.
Okay.
It gets very expensive for, for this, and I don't know if there's, um, something that the, the board can, can, you, you know, for a condition, have them pay for the, the ECO tech, I don't know if we can do that as part of a condition to cover the ECO tech cost?
This, this project was done in accordance with the original site, so, um, I don't know if that's something that's within your purview from the origi- it's where they ran the power from the trail to the road. I don't know if that's within your pur- purview to even, to worry about that, or because it's the wetlands and the buffer, it still should stay at Concom.
Well, I mean, we inspect all the work that happens, and the plan does show some amount of clearing near Point before that work, and it taught me to tell standing and looking at it, are they too far, or not enough, or too high? I, I didn't see, um, the report of wetland issues, I'm not doubting that something happened there, but Concom will investigate that more. If they have, they have an open order of conditions on the project, I assume they do, the original project was working in the buffer zone, so, um, whether they've got something new, like in the case of Ozgus, a battery in the buffer zone, that's a change to the, the Concom's order of conditions is the same as your planning board rule, that's a change to that, so we'll want to review that, and if there's a violation of, you know, intrusion into a wetlands, then that's, that's a different issue.
Right.
What I'm trying to say is there a way that we can condition the cost of that engineer for Concom, because it's gonna be an expensive, um, you know, the town has a very tight budget to, if it wasn't Concom's fault or our fault, they decided they wanted to mess up, mess up, you know, play with the wetlands, so, I don't know if that's something that we can condition into a, in approval, if we approve that.
Wouldn't that be covered up under our engineering, and, and if a?
Well, it's a discussion which is happening.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, but would it, I mean, we, we have Mike, obviously, that we would be covered, but what if it, they, they use ECO tech over there, what if?
Yeah. Sure, but, but if, due to our conditions, if, if we had to hire a, an expert to come in and look at it, other than Mike, or if we had to have somebody come and look at it, I, I think that would be covered under us, I would think.
Yeah. We can put it in an approval of the, of the, as a condition approval. I, I don't know if that's out of our purview.
It's part of, it's, it's part of the original cycling approval. And if there's a question that, I, I don't, I don't know.
I don't know if that, that's a, a like a legal cost if we can add that in, I just don't, it's just kind of not fair that the conservation's like blowing their budget on something that we really had no control, or.
Um, I honestly don't have any answer to that question, I can investigate it and try to find out.
Maybe that's a Cosgrove question.
It might be.
It might, yeah, I'm sure.
It might be.
Just, just run it by, I'm sure, um, I don't know, just reach out to David and see if we can just have approval to call the attorney.
It's, I mean, they do have, you know, an order of conditions when the original application came through and everything, so that's what they're reviewing, and they want to investigate the site to see if it complied with their original order of conditions, so.
Sure.
So it sounds like we need to he- talk to the attorney, and we need to hear back from Concom, um, and then we can continue, before we decide what, what they're gonna go.
Yeah, see if they, even if they had it. And just, we, just follow, we just follow up on that, just to see if we can help them pay for their bills with the condition.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the other, obviously, we have all the trees that are down and the, um, I don't know if, if you talked to any of the abutters about fences, or what, what you're gonna do to make them kind of fix the situation? Have you guys had any communications at all with the abutters that?
So I believe you're referring to the ten-foot buffer that was already addressed, we would work with, uh, Graves, uh, and that was addressed, that we would, in the springtime, come and plant additional trees. The box that's up in the front of the, next to the easement, close to Michelle's property, we have been talking with Michelle and, um, had said we would plant additional screening there as well for the springtime when the weather's right, so we have been in contact with.
If I went to the back of my property, and I have the right to go to the back of my property, and I looked at what that, that mess that, that looks like a tornado went through and just like chopped down the trees, I'd be pretty upset, and I'd want a fence. Um, so how, how?
I mean, that's one issue, um, or, or plannings, but the plannings would have to be approved, but you'd have to have a planning plan that, that's approved by the board, by the planning board.
By a professional, by a professional, you know, plant engineer.
And that's what we've done in the past when, when people violated it.
Could I ask a question, please? What's the difference between, if I went in there and cut all my trees to begin with, because I wanted them cut, would there still be complaints like that?
This is a site for them, though, this is-
No, no, I'm talking just-
That's what enabled them to put the, that, that was part of the stipulation, so they were able to-
No, I understand that, but if I just went through and cut all my own trees.
If you, if you-
The solar field wasn't there, yeah, you could do that, because it's your property, but the fact that it's a commercial solar field in a residential zone, there was a site plan approved, there was condition to that site plan to leave that buffer. If it was your property and you were farming it and you wanted to clear your land and everything, well, that's a permitted use in that zone, that's perfectly acceptable. The fact that this is a commercial solar field behind these residential homes is reason why that property was-
And they already signed, the plan was already submitted, and they whipped those trees up, and, um, it's a balance, we want the re- re- the tax revenue, we want business, but we don't-
Even if, even if I cut all my trees and the, and the, my abutters didn't like it?
Oh, you can larceny property you want, as long as it's, if it's yours, you can clear cut anything.
Yeah, that's, I'm just wondering where the rights start and end.
When it goes from residential to commercial. So a resident in a residential neighborhood can clear cut his property to the, his very end of the border.
Yeah.
When a commercial property wants to come into a residential neighborhood, what happens is they then have to follow the rules, because a resident, their next door neighbor, also a resident, wouldn't have bought a property next to Sunoco. They brought a property next to a farm, so then in order to, for that next door neighbor to feel like they're still in a residential neighborhood, you have to give them the feeling by buffering of being in a residential neighborhood, of kind of hiding the commercial aspect of that. And that's why. I know it sounds silly, I know it's your property, I know it seems big brotherish, um, but it's just giving, it's protecting the abutter from, again, we wouldn't let Sunoco go in there, so because it's all commercial stuff, it's just the buffering.
Yeah. No, I understand that. I know when I stand at my barn up the top of the hill and I look around and I see, well, a whole lot of lights that weren't there thirty years ago.
Absolutely.
And that still bugs the hell out of me, but I know there's nothing I can do about it.
Right.
So I'm getting like, what is it, we call that light pollution?
Mm-hmm. And that's why we make, we make, um, uh, solar farms and other businesses both put, point their lights down and not up.
No, I, I'm just talking houses.
Oh, sure, oh, yeah.
And stuff like that.
And even with subdivisions, we have a lo- we, you know, if it's more than, if you're building a subdivision, we, we do the same thing, we try to, um, preserve the character in the neighborhood that the, that the, the residents that were there before had.
Exactly.
So, um, I would be, if, if I, if I came to these meetings, which the abutters did, and I sat through these site plans, and it was promised that all these trees were gonna stay up, and I, and so I didn't put up a big fight and argue with them.
No, I understood that they were gonna replant some trees and everything like that, but they're also gonna cede it all down to whatever I want it to.
Right, and it, and so-
So it's not like it's gonna remain the Sahara Desert, I don't want to look at that either.
No, they need to, they need to replant trees where they were supposed to not cut the dead trees down, so that, that, that's the issue, we need, they need to restore that.
No, I understand, I understand.
But it takes a lot of years for a tree to grow, um, to get back to those, so in the meantime, the, the, I, I think, uh, fences are in order, but if the, if the people that were most affected, um, if I go up there, um, and stand in the back of any of these guys, like you see a random person walking on your property, um, if I'm standing and I, and I see trees, I would expect that you would kind of appease these abutters by figuring out the fences that they need and fixing that, so they're not looking at, well, now an illegal battery. Um, or any, at least if the trees are up and you put the batteries in, it wouldn't even be so bad, but the trees are down and you put the battery in, so, um, I don't, I'm, I'm, I don't think I'm feeling too, um, aggressive by saying, um, I, I want, if the residents want fences, the abutters want fences, I really want fences, that's just my opinion as a board member.
There may be a solution for it, and, and if you do go with the, the, the replanting of trees, um, we've hired in the past, we've hired a, a landscape architect to make sure that what gets planted looks natural and, and matches what was there previously, and will still provide some sort of visual blockage of, of, you know.
I can't choose my own trees?
You can, as long as they're, they're on the approved list by the planning board.
Yeah, there's an approved list for trees.
They have to be a specific size and a specific size.
But it's typically an evergreen tree, so that there's year-round bark, too.
And they can't be, you know, two-foot-high evergreen trees.
Not a deciduous tree.
No, I under- I understand that, no, but.
But, yeah, in the meantime, the, the, the fences, because those are, I, I mean, you're-
I plan on putting barbed wire.
Yeah, well, we need, we, we're talking vinyl probably, and, um, and a good, a good, rainforet, your fence is beautiful, it's a good example, so you guys should go and look at the rainforet, but see if that's pretty.
But that, I don't think that's too attractive.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I have to recommendation, but we need to, we need to figure out what, um.
That looks completely out of place.
Um, so I'm, I'm Michelle Nakavi at seventy-eight Archer Hill Road, so, um, I was traveling about a little over a week ago when, is there a Peter, or Pete?
Yeah, it's my girlfriend.
Um, okay, so he had reached out to me, um, to, now that, we wanted to wait until everything was in place, so obviously, within the last couple months, these random extra yellow poles at the top of my driveway popped up, and we, my husband and I wanted to make sure that everything was done, and we knew exactly what we were working with as far as what we needed for screening. Um, so I had told him that I was gonna get back to him as soon as I got back from my trip, and then I knew that this meeting was happening, so I wanted to talk about it at this meeting to make sure that it's documented properly. Um, but given the, the fact that there was the pad that was put in at the top of my driveway, and then those extra poles because of the national grid requirement, um, with the extra pad, and then due to the clearance of the trees and how much you can see, and the fact that the easement clearance through the woods was a lot wider than was supposed to be as well, I am-
I disagree with that, but it's fine.
It's more than twenty feet, you can wa- I, I don't want you walking back there, but I can have her walk back there and see it's way more than twenty feet, but anyway, um, I do, I am requesting, um, a fence to be put around my property for visual mitigation for the continuity on my property as well, um, and I want to- For the continuity on my property as well, um, and I want it to be high enough to, so that way it's not. Showing the pad and those yellow poles, um, at the side of my driveway, um, and then that way when you're looking out in the backyard, you're not seeing a full clearance. Um, and I want it to go around my property. Um, for, yeah, for continuity on my property, I want it all the way around, yes.
So, um, I mean, the, the board, board can chime in, but you guys need to work out in agreement to make it. To, to make everybody happy, so you guys can work together and, and figure out how to make it. Um, and you, you can tell that I'm pretty unhappy that, that, that happened. We were very, very careful on this solar farm. To make sure that those trees stayed up, and that's why I'm so upset that, um, that, that happened, if.
Uh, yeah, I, I agree with you, I mean, this, this was a, a, an issue that got brought up during Android's inspections. Back when the project was being built a, years ago, and there was a memo a year ago, and the memo was put out saying that we would, you know, do the mitigations and, and. And work with Graves and the town to come up with a solution to do that, so.
You know, new, new.
That was, that was addressed and discussed a year ago, so.
Yeah, so we, we can definitely talk about that. I just wanted to make sure that it was initially in the town setting that I, we decided. Now that we see what we're working with, what we want for the screening, um, so we can talk about that, um.
We don't usually get involved, you guys kind of figure out.
I agree, I agree, so.
I don't think you get involved, 'cause I don't think you should, but you are, so, I mean, you're raised this, I know what you're saying, I'm not saying that. We agree with that condition, so, um, I understand you want it, you want a fence, you want a wall, you want a. A castle around houses and moats, I don't know that we're gonna do that, so, um, you know, I understand what you're suggesting. Um, you know, but fence the entire house, fence the entire yard.
Is for visual mitigation, continuity around my property for the value of my property in resale possibilities?
You know, it's restoration of a condition that's, that's failed, which is the, the buffer, happy to.
She's talking about two different issues.
She's, she's saying refence the whole yard, I mean.
Yeah, well, well.
The easement's along one side of the property, I think that's what you're referring to.
No, she's saying the whole property.
For, for continuity on my.
I, I understand, so we're not putting, gonna fence the entire property.
It's fine, we, we can talk about it outside the board.
So we'll, so kind of figure out what's, it, figure it out, um, so everybody's. Like I said, every, so everybody is, um, unhappy, um, other board discussion, do I have other discussion from the board?
Um, so, so, do you, do you wanna talk about the battery? I mean, I, I. I think, you know, it, it, it's where it is now, is it a violation of the original site plan or, or, or approvals? Yeah, probably, um, is there sufficient space for safety? Probably, um, so.
Well, this is a hundred, they make the hundred feet, right?
Um, I used to, if, if the planning board chose to, I think that they should, uh, and. They, back on April third of last year, they adopted the parameters that were set by the fire department. I know things have changed and requests were changed. They adopted those parameters, those are the parameters, so. Board chooses to not make them move this particular battery, I think you should go on the record with your approval. To make sure that you're doing it for this particular situation, so you don't set a precedent that the next pro- I mean. I've looked at, I've gone through these projects, many of them, they get, they're gonna have the same problem on many other sites.
And happy neighbors would go a long way to.
Right.
So would it be cheaper to move the whole battery or put up a fence? I mean, I look at it like.
Bear in mind that, that, I, I understand that this is certainly your show and it's your hearing, you guys make your decision. You started, you know, you start with the understanding that under section one, you know, no, I'm gonna talk. So, under section one A and under section three, uh, this is a priority use and any regulation that you have has to be reasonable.
Sure.
And it's priority, it's, it's, you, you can, so if you say, listen, we're gonna, we're gonna allow it. But in order to do that, you gotta bond it three times the cost, Ian, we're gonna require you to fence all of our neighbors' properties. That's gonna be a condition as to whether or not that's a reasonable condition. That's just from a legal perspective, I understand that that's your show. On our end, we're saying, I understand what you're saying, if it's an acceptable condition, we'll, we'll absorb it. If it's not an acceptable condition, we'll determine what our options are.
Is the solar field a priority use? The battery is secondary, just for storage, so that they can sell.
Storage is considered a solar energy facility under section one A, forty A, section one, one, one A.
I mean, but essentially, the, the solar facility is actually the priority use and the storage facility allows them to sell electricity at different times, you know.
Just so you know, they're the same.
So it's fine, so, I mean, I, I'm just, I, I'm just throwing it out there, I get the argument and you wanna spend as much money as possible, but. You, um, kinda illegally threw some batteries in without any approvals when it was very clear that you shouldn't have, and then. You kinda ripped up the property and cut all the trees down, and it looks like a freaking tornado out there. So you can argue with me, start throwing the legal stuff and say, but you guys were wrong, you're wrong, you guys were wrong, you shouldn't have put the batteries in, you did. So now you're gonna have to deal with the, the, kind of like the ramifications of, of, of that. You can blame your contractor, the person who ripped them a freeze, I, I, I don't care, but now we need to do the fair thing to make sure that the residents get what they need. And we're not, I, I, I don't believe we're being unfair. I didn't say you had four hundred thousand dollars per megawatt or need to put a, put in a moat. We're talking about reasonable mitigation to, to fix, to fix the issue, um, and we're not voting, this is just a discussion point. Obviously, um, once Concom comes back and they're, um, and the, and hopefully the damage isn't. The, the wet ones damaged or there isn't many issues, um, it's gonna help kind of settle things a little bit. And I've been talking.
The easement area along the property, if this is stewed on what the clearing done there, I think the simplest ways to go and have them re-surveyed. To determine what they stayed with in the easement area.
Do we wanna see a mitigation plan for the, the prior to approval of that area? So there's needs to be some.
Yep, so.
Physical mitigation plan, landscape plan.
We made, we made, um, a rain for rent do it, it's like, when we set that precedent, that, you know, when you, um. Cut down a lot of trees by accident, you need to bring in somebody professional to make sure that they, they, it looks like it should, um, before the incident. Um, and again, the, um, the, I know, and the fence too. It's gonna take a decade to get the trees growing the way they, the way they are, so having a fence. Um, block the view of, of a giant trailer truck sized battery, I think is pretty reasonable. Um, we can't really vote on anything, I don't know if there's any other discussion points, I think the formula for, um, the bond. Works here too.
We'll review that, we'll, we'll review if it does.
And we'll, and we'll pay attention to that, and if there's no other comments, we can continue.
I have a comment, sorry. The, the total acreage there is significant, like McDougall Mitchell's is a hundred and twenty-five acres. I'm just curious, if Mr. Stevens has a lot of acreage there, why was it, you have so much land to deal with. Why was it not a hundred feet? It's, there's something with the project that it missed twenty, thirty feet, so.
I was not even on placement of that.
You didn't choose exactly.
Yeah, I'm just, it's just kinda funny that I went through all of this because of so much land.
So, so the, the hundred feet, the, just, you know, the hu- under the, uh, the stands, the guidance. From the National Fire Protection comes in, they say it's, it's, it's ten feet, is what they've recommended. Hundred feet from property line, from building or property line in remote areas, if the building is permitted to the property line. So it's really a hundred feet from the building setback on the abutting property, which we're within.
But it's not a remote area, it's a residential.
Well, it'll be remote still, because it's, it's still.
My question, my question was why with forty, fifty acres, we couldn't find a better place?
It's a, it's a hun- it's.
It's part of the entire system, so we put it next to the existing batteries or the equipment that was there.
Thank you.
So, I, I mean, we are close to the, we are closer to the line, um, you know, we're seventy-five feet, not sixty-five feet, we're seventy-five feet. Uh, from the line, the building setback on the abutting property is thirty feet, so we're a hundred and five from the building setback line. Which is the most aggressive, that's ten times the most aggressive standard that, um, they, that they put forth. Ms- Mr. Besskus was here tonight, he said, you know, ten feet, that's what we're looking at, ten feet. Um, we're a hundred feet from the, if they built to their father's den, and by the way, they have the, the house. Is four hun- is four hundred and fifty-five feet away, but if they built right up to the, the furthest location they could, they're still over a hundred feet away.
We're not looking at it from a safety standpoint, we are looking somewhat at the safety standpoint, but we're also looking at it for, uh, for continuity of neighborhood.
Yeah, well, people have full use of their property up through the property.
If I decided, if, if they decided to put a pool on the very end of their property, they would be looking at that. Um, and not that that's, and not that that is something that we always consider, but because of the, the. The situation, because there's a giant battery there, because.
Then I'd be forced to look at them.
It's not a comical situation here.
No, it's, um, no, I mean, we.
It's true.
The, the buffer is from the property line, because if any of us on the street decided to use our property up until that point. I did a lot of research and it's up until the property point, it has nothing to do with the house is located.
The building setback line, so the standard on the, on the fee, under that.
I don't care about the standard, actually, I, I look at other towns doing and other towns are really on the same page.
But we're, we're under old, we're under, there's no zoning on this one, so under old zoning. So you, you, you say if we establish new zoning.
We have new batter- I mean.
Regulations, but I, I, I think we're, we're beating a dead horse down, so I, I think.
So let's, let's just continue this to the next meeting, 'cause we like to get home at a reasonable time.
Make a motion to continue.
You guys will talk and kind of come back to us and figure out, and so we'll be more organized, and we have a motion to continue.
Make a motion to, uh, continue the call for a roll of public hearing to February nineteenth.
Second.
Thank you.
In favor?
Thank you.
Is there a question on nineteen thousand, two hundred panels?
Nineteen thousand, okay, okay, Doc. So, at, at that rate, if we needed to decommission the whole thing, we're talking about.
I think from our state, we weren't, we hadn't been working.
A hundred and twenty-five is enough.
That, that, if you did buy the numbers that we got by, it was over a million dollars.
So, well, no, because it's still.
No, no, for the panels, that twenty-five dollars a piece would be, um, seven hundred and fifty. I'm, I'm ballparking in my head, I'm, I'm not the best math person, but if you had not, what, nineteen thousand? Times twenty-five, that's a cheaply panel.
What if, what if, what if all of a sudden they decide to be placing these over the next.
Yeah, four hundred and eighty, so it's closer to a million if you go by the fifty-two dollar panels.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, is with that many pa- I mean, we figured out that many panels for eight thousand panels, we kinda did the math and, and it worked out. But there's a lot more panels on that four megawatts than what I originally thought, so it's about half of what we expected to.
So, I mean, it, it's a significant number, but that's what the town would have to pay if we had to deal with.
I'm not sure that one twenty-five will cover, that we, that was calculated on a four megawatt field with eight thousand panels. So if you do a four mega, four and a half megawatt field with, would you say nineteen-ish, nineteen thousand? It, it, that one twenty-five may not be enough.
Our job is to make sure that we protect our.
Look at those numbers and, and kind of do different fields and look at the, the different fields that we have and say, okay, if they had a battery pack and it was this field, what would it be?
So Randy, will you kind of write something up?
It's not gonna be perfect, you know, we're, they're, they're, it, it, it'll get us close, some it might be more, some it might be less.
It's a great improvement from what we have.
But it's a simple way to do it without having to.
And I, we have a, actually.
Do a lot of extra work.
I was impressed you threw in that good number, I was like.
No, I, I calculated it here, I was gonna say.
This is also another, um, issue that actually Jane, uh, made me aware of. And you all might be aware of it, but it was, I'll be, prior to, um, my, me being here. They actually, when a solar field was, uh, proposed in industrial zone, business zone, something like that, they were not required to put up a bond.
Alan didn't recommend it.
Unfortunately, I don't, doesn't matter where it is, it costs money to get rid of it, whether it's a, I mean, and we, the town actually has. Based on my experience, getting a better chance of getting stuck with a commercial property than we do with a residential property. So, it's even more of a reason why this, if we have these opportunities, come up and take advantage of them for those ones that probably don't have a bond.
We can't do, so we did the research, we can't really do anything, if, especially if you don't have a bond, we can't really do much besides a small increase. But when they come in, in, do the batteries, we, we do have the opportunity to kind of rectify the situation. And I know they're looking at it as unfair, but in, in the first place, we should have been, but I, but in our, you know, in defense of the planning board. Across the state, nobody knew what they were doing, solar was a new, a new game, and Charlton, you know, we were kind of salivating at the idea of all this revenue. So.
Right for the.
And, and we're actually at the forefront of this, we live in a lot of towns, I mean, there's some, like the Westbrook Field and other towns that are doing things, but. The batteries is new to everyone, so now, like, I think the Westbrook Field doesn't even take consideration of battery. It's just a hundred thousand, yeah, so they, they're the ones that I think are proposing a four hundred thousand if you want a battery. That's how much they don't wanna deal with, but, I mean, that might be challenged or whatever, but the point is, everybody's looking at. Charlton to see what we're going to do as far as dealing with batteries, because nobody has a firm grasp on it yet.
But, but I, I do, the research that I've done, I'm looking at the, you know, the National Fire Protection Agency codes and everything else. It's safer now than it was in the past, so they're, they're definitely, they're, they're not.
So much about the safety, it means the safety, our job isn't really the safety, our job is the, is aesthetics and. And would you want that next to your home, and it's fair, they're allowed, um, so we all know Andrew, our new.
Andrew, how are you?
Head administrator.
Thank you. Um, I was just looking quickly through your bylaws and I noticed that, uh. It does require that any engineer prior to doing, um, you know, any, you know, any large scale solar, provide you guys an estimate. For the removal, um, provided by an engineer, so, um, I, I did look at another town that they just recently updated their bylaws and. This might have been without, you know, I'm sure they didn't account for batteries in it, but they require a hundred, hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost of estimated removal. So it might be reasonable to ask them to come in and ask their engineer to provide that cost and then maybe use that as, as a baseline for balancing out.
Yeah, what, I mean, one of our concerns there is not just the removal, but the disposal.
Right, including removal and disposal, with that, and that, the removal, disposable without, without including any cost of recycling. So that total full amount cost and whatever, a hundred and twenty-five percent of that would be, that's what one town recently just passed, so I think that might be. For, for just discussing. Not Barry, so Palmer.
Okay.
But, yeah, I mean, it's actually, you know, like based on the August material, that's gonna be. More significant number than what we were proposing, but on the same note.
But it might be worth it to use that as a baseline.
And I, I know it sounds like huge numbers that we're throwing out, oh, but first of all, they're backed by hundred million. They're backed by huge, huge corporations, they have this money, so as soon as they build them, they're selling those credits, they're making a boatload of money. And I'm not saying we wanna, you know, um, we, we should wanna, you know, be greedy, we just wanna protect our town, we're not getting this. None of these bonds come to us, all it does is sits there, and if nothing happens, it all goes, it's, 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 it's a small cost.
Property's planned, you get it all back.
That's right.
Right, so we're not, I, I mean, we're, we're not like anti-solar, we've, we have tons, we have more solar than any other town probably in the whole entire state.
By probably three, four X.
That's true, and I, I think we.
Warren, I believe, is very close.
So we're, you know.
They've had a good time with theirs too.
So we're getting there and we just, again, we just wanna be here.
It's one of our towns, do I know?
Oh, is it, you're doing it, oh, yeah.
And, a- again, big, the big numbers and, but, I mean, Zero Point, obviously, like, still in business with us, they have plenty of facilities with us. Like, how, they, so.
I think sixteen of our facilities was Zero Point, I mean, a, a large number, so, I mean, this won't be the last time we see them, so.
Well, they've already sold them though, Randy, some of them have sold, so they're the engineering firm, like, uh, G C. Pro-Tec does the installing, is that right, Mike? So, once they're done, they're, they're part of the position, their job, they're gone. Um, and the woman sitting next to me, Jack's, already sold, and they both sold as two different.
Hmm, so that's why I think that we need to look at each one separately and, and do the calculations separately instead of just doing the whole nineteen thousand panels. Divide it up, I failed to figure out what it is, because if that bond is gonna move with the property, those properties concerned, they could always. They could always decommission one and leave the other one up, or they could sell it to two.
Talking about not getting involved, but that might be, we, I mean, that's a.
With the property and, and leave it that way.
loophole with one of the property, if we just, yeah, something that we need to make sure we don't.
Calculations, we need to divide it up per, per property.
And if you do by mop, map, block lot, it'll show that, you know. And if you do by mop, map, block, lot, it'll show that, you know, Mitchell's is here and the lots that Jack would do the plans.
And it should be pretty straightforward, you have.
So that'll be, that'll take care of it.
One point nine five megawatts on this lot and the other three and a half on that lot, whatever it is, and so you can divide it up accordingly.
And they did do that.
Just make sure the number that we came up with, we're, we're covered, and, you know, I, I, I don't think we're gonna come up with an easy formula that's gonna covers a hundred percent of everything.
No, but we can, we can, we're human, I mean.
But it's better than, it's better than.
Common sense with these things.
Better than zero.
Especially ones that we have zero.
And, you know, the, the newest technology that's coming in, which is gonna sort of hint into this, is that, um, we're, now, the new proposing is to have battery storage sites, to have absolutely nothing to store. It's to sit there and just acquire the grid.
We, we have zoning for that though.
Article nineteen.
Article nineteen covers that.
We have zoning, we have zoning for that.
Article nineteen and zoning covers that.
We're, we're gonna be dealing with that soon, so, because.
So it's allowed for two zones.
Somebody help us with that, somebody help us with that.
Thank you.
We could see that coming on the horizon, because the deal we are with doing the incentives for just that.
Yeah.
And, and as we update our, our zoning bylaws, which is gonna be the next six months of everybody's lives here, or maybe longer, that, you know, if anything needs to be tweaked, if we need to throw in, um, you know, more details in, in these, in these bylaws, it's gonna give us the opportunity to, to really tweak these things to keep them, to just, again, invite their business in, but yet keep the residents safe, um, and.
And the, the technology might improve for, you know, ten years from now, listening to my own, might be gone, there might be some new technology that is a lot smaller, a lot less simple, and we, we can always, they can always ask for a bond reduction if you find out, okay, you're not using that anymore.
Sure, that's a lot more to decommission a nineteen seventy-two computer than it does a nineteen.
Exactly.
Think about it.
Alright, so let, we have an A and R for, um, French Road.
Yes, uh, they're basically doing a wall line adjustment, removing from one property, you're gonna use French Road and then, uh, and draw a larger parcel of land. This property actually, uh, we're controlling by laws except for they actually doesn't have the frontage on the road, but the frontage on the road is not changing. It's, uh, the property area, all the other dimensions of the property are changing, they're taking a reapportioning of the property and adding it to a, uh, large piece of land in the rear of the property.
Do you have another copy?
Yeah.
I'm just having a whole plan, three, two.
So in essence, we're making the property figure, but not changing the frontage.
Right, so, uh, the, the, yeah, the, the frontage, you know, it's a hundred and seventy-five foot, so the road frontage is a hundred and fifty-one currently, it's not wanting to change, the frontage on the road.
Yes, you know, not to approve it. Adding to the back end.
And that's this parcel view?
Yes, yes, it is, yes. So the piece of view taken off in the back and add to this property.
Makes sense. Good for me.
Yeah, I agree.
It's pretty straightforward.
Do we have a motion? Do, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Do you have a motion to approve this, um?
Uh, motion approved.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Can I ask you a good procedural question?
You guys, oh, so I, you guys have a, I'll try to mine.
Yeah.
If it says approval not required, and, but we still have to make a motion?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
So we in Massachusetts, same way, I don't think A and Rs are in other town, other states either.
No, they aren't, it's Massachusetts.
I just think it's funny that, and I've wondered this for years, why it's approval not required, but we require approval.
Actually, it's.
Because obviously there's a fee involved that I.
Actually, other states have done, depending on it, some states are like, if you're up to three lots, this can be done administratively, the Z E O actually reviews it as long as, you know, not considered a subdivision.
Well, that's fine.
Can I do two, five?
So, and Massachusetts is unique in a lot of ways.
Exactly.
I don't know, does this one have to be signed, does it?
No, I do get, I mean, multiple copies there, so.
Okay.
My line one was. Thank you, are you guys gonna do that paper?
Do, do you want us to sign this one, or do you want us to sign the back one here?
I just thought that was the efficient way to, no, I thought, that's what I thought you guys were doing all day, all that time.
I wanna make sure all the signatures were in the same order. We'll leave the top line for you.
I look, I look at old plans like a decade old and I'm like, wow, it's like Bill Halpern, it's me.
Was still.
I'm still one.
My signature's changed over the years, even if it was still me, it wouldn't still look like me.
Mine's still just a giant scribble.
It'll be two.
Hey, let's put this one on the jeans.
There's a P in front of that, you can tell it.
Yeah, sure. No, you just have to sign the first one, I meant the second one.
Oh, Jerry, I'm sorry, you should have just yelled, yelled at me and told me to move you up, I didn't mean to make you, make you stay.
I'm normally very quiet, don't worry.
Throwing something at me, um.
No, I learned something tonight about the solar fields.
Ponkin Hill.
I believe I don't wanna sit on any more than me.
Well, this one's a messy.
You don't want one on your property, it'll break your.
But I do approve it, or, I, I like your approach, I think you're on, on track with protecting the rights of the, the residents in your by our.
Motorcross and marijuana was far more fun, I know it's. I wouldn't mind going to the High Crest subdivision right now, if, if that's what you're.
Ponkin, you're here for Ponkin, right? Yep.
Uh, I don't know if Randy has.
No, I haven't filled it in the board, so, uh, as you, well, you may remember this past fall.
Drove up there yesterday to look at it, so I haven't.
What's that?
Yes, I drove up there yesterday to look at it, 'cause I hadn't seen it, so.
So, this past fall, um, well, a property owner had bought the subdivision and basically trying to flip lots and, uh, work wasn't done in accordance to the original subdivision approval. He sold some lots, or went under contract for some lots, um.
Agreed, and he's building two of them right now.
Well, no, that's, he's not the property owner, the orig, this gentleman bought these four closed subdivisions from the bank, he's the one that was flipping the lots. Couple of builders went in there, bought a few different lots each, and the work, work wasn't done in accordance with the subdivision approval, so we were like, well, sorry, but you can't get any permits to build a house until that's taken care of. Um, between, basically Jerry and Mike, um, came up with a solution, which they had provided that plan that came back before the planning board.
Yep, we remember that.
Is that what they were gonna do with that, that little nub thing with the, with the all that water?
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're gonna fix some, some fixes to it to make it better.
Right, so, long story short, the work hasn't been completed in accordance with the subdivision approval. Now, the second builder want, we, the first builder that was working, he's actually taken upon himself to do the work for the subdivision approval. Um, he got a couple of permits to get started on his houses, and he knows, we have it in writing that he cannot get C O's on those houses until the, um, site work has been done, in accordance with that approval.
There's two houses being built at the top of that, that knob right now.
Right, now we have a, the second builder wants to build his house, and they're saying the site plan work has not been done. So, and then, as a result, actually, the second builder came in and asked me about, well, uh, there's a bond in place for it, I actually spoke to Mike early this evening about the bond amount that we're holding for that, it's not adequate to deal with the work that needs to be done out there, so it's even more of a reason why we do not wanna get somebody a permit.
How did that happen? Do we not bond it correctly, or just spend so long, or?
We're adding, we're adding a much larger cul-de-sac now, where it wasn't funded before.
This subdivision, it's, it's been in and out.
It was never supposed to be a cul-de-sac, no, that's right.
If, if I could, off of my, my start, my start is started back in October, or even maybe a bit earlier. I was approached, and I'm not good with names, I was approached by a builder who had bought four lots up on that subdivision. And at the time, I knew of two of the main issues that I have personally, knowing where that subdivision was headed, that short road, pardon again, what's the name of that? Short road that.
Henry Vista.
Henry Vista, that was originally slated to go up over the hill, tie into High Crest at the other side. That was scrapped due to the financial and probably the wise move not to even approach that part of it. But what they left was an unfinished retention pond, and they actually, this goes back many years, I've been in here with Alan many times, asking why they were allowed to just let that retention area, I'm not gonna call it a certified retention pond, I don't think there was really a plan. But it was on top of the road, as the highway division, D P W now, I said every winter, I was very concerned. It was never resolved, but it, it came and went, so I let it go. Well, now, and, and the other issue that I had before I was approached by this builder, was on the original part of High Crest that comes in off of Hammond Hill. The appro, the, the original plan, it was a phased approach, I understand that, but the final phase was supposed to go up and over and tie into the High Crest on the other side. Well, I, I think that's been scrapped, I think everybody knows that, but the, the cul-de-sac that should have been required to be put in on the original High Crest was never done. I've spent town funds trying to create, just modify enough to keep the residents happy, allow me to do my snow and ice removal in that area. And I've been in here and asked what's gonna be done about this. Self admittedly, I never came before the planning board and I'm not looking back with these, I'm just telling you my history, I'm not pointing any fingers, I'm here for guidance. With that said, I'll go further with my story, I was approached by the builder, he wanted two driveway permits. I have the authority to authorize driveway permits, if I don't authorize it, the project doesn't move. So basically, he's looking at me, he says, I just bought four lots, and now I find out there's these requirements. And I said, well, the requirements, now, if I'm wrong, you can straighten me out, the requirement's actually on the owner of the properties. The sub, the guy that's got the site plan, that's his responsibility to meet the requirements. And he said, well, I talked to him, he's doing nothing. I really think, maybe I shouldn't even say this, but I think he was gonna walk away because it just wasn't feasible to him financially to proceed. And the nerd, the guy, the builder was nervous, he had put in for four lots, he's invested. So I suggested I come up and spoke with Randy, uh, Mike, I, I don't wanna leave you out, I'm not sure at that point I spoke to you, but it was passed to you. And I made the recommendation, at the very least, we get a plan from the engineers, some engineering firm, design that retention pan, uh, plan and tie in that pipe that's creating the issue on the short road. Design a cul-de-sac up at the top where it's gonna be, have to be, and in my view, from planning board's view, I hope, they have a responsibility to design and install the cul-de-sac on the original High Crest, I don't think I should have to rebuild that. So, I suggested he come speak to you, I said, if that, if the design was put in, approved by Graves Engineering.
They came to us.
No, I'm getting to that and I realize it's not my authority to make it, make a, you know, a deal, I hate that word, but this is what I would like to see happen. I talked to Randy, Randy said, well, run it by the board, Mike. So apparently, if I'm not right, correct me please, but they did get a plan, and I think it was done by this builder. Because I think the owner was kind of like hands off, like, hey, okay, I believe he even signed some paper allowing the authority to the builder to meet with you and come up with some kind of plan. So I believe you approved, am I correct? You approved what they, so he started doing the work, he tied the pipe out of the retention pond into the existing drainage, ending that problem, I was happy to see that done. I believe, and Mike can further back this off, the retention pond work is not done yet, I believe he's got other things that are in the plan. I believe, Mike, you inspected the work for the tie-in, am I correct?
As far as I know, you put twenty feet of pipe in just to get off the edge of the road.
He did.
It went no further than that.
It went to the first structure, the drainage.
Yeah, to the last manhole on Henry's Vista Lane.
Correct, that's what he tied in, into the retention pond as we know it now, whether.
I don't think they've had a tie-in there yet.
That's where the pipe comes from, there's no more water coming out of a pipe that goes to the, well, I was told that you folks were there to inspect the work.
For the, the work out of the pavement, we saw it, yeah, if we went further, we didn't see that, but he's gotta put it to the destruction.
Well, it came from inside the retention pond, as far as I'm concerned, and it, it's a responsibility of the Graves Engineering to make sure that's done, I'm sure. That needs to get done. I was just approached this week by another builder who has bought lots, he wants another driveway, he wants a driveway permit to stop building. I'm looking for guidance.
So what do you want from him?
It's not up to me, this is out of, in other words, I feel that I got in the middle of something that really wasn't my responsibility. I, I participated in the agreement, I suggested you folks accepted the recommendation, apparently with Mike, and move forward for the design and build of the cul-de-sac on the newer High Crest and the work at the retention.
High Crest or Henry's Vista?
No, Henry Vista was one part of it, now I also said, how can we have houses being built? How could I possibly sign off an O C when I have no way to plow, sand, turn trucks around, fire apparatus, emergency? That road just dead ends, so it needs to have that cul-de-sac that was approved, done, before, it would be my recommendations, no further building permits allowed. In other words, no driveway permits, it's under my authority and that's why I'm here.
And the builders are probably blowing up your phone, because interest rates are at a three-year low, they can't keep inventory on, so they, those builders know that as soon as that house goes up, it's gonna be sold.
That's probably why he's pushing.
Oh, I have no doubt, because, yeah.
But what the.
What can we do for you, what, so, so.
I'll, I'll enlighten the board, I mean, uh, unfortunately, it is what it is, I think the building's gonna have to wait. The, I, uh, the builder who's actually doing the work, I mean, winter came, and that's basically what stopped him. And, uh, he is now waiting, he, before he can be, rebuild or build the cul-de-sac, is, he's waiting till March fifteenth when the asphalt plant's open. Can't do much before then, yes, he can do preparation and everything, but he's not gonna be able to complete putting a base coat down, he says the as, that's what I'm told, he said the asphalt plant's open at March fifteenth.
No, he's offset with the paving, as far as I'm concerned.
On the cul-de-sac?
On, on, uh, the short, the, the.
Yeah, Henry Vista's the short one, High Crest is the one that goes up.
High Crest is another phase of the original site plan.
So, I, my understanding was the, the cul-de-sac that we were requiring was on a High Crest at the top of the hill, okay.
Yeah, yeah, that's the one that he can't do, he, he's telling me that he can't do it till the asphalt plant's open on March fifteenth, he can't do anything before then, because.
So you can't give the builder any sort of driveway permit until that, until that, um.
What I'm looking for.
So you're looking for the other extension of High Crest that just dead ends right now?
Well, I, I think that that, this is the time to consider who's responsible for it, and to make that conditional on the authorization of more building permits, in other words, you have them.
Sure, so the original builder needs to spend some of his money that he's getting to sell these lots, fix the rest of the road before he can sell them to you.
Well, it's probably a problem that he's, he's not even aware of, as the buyer of the property, but I suppose that buyer would be aware.
So the original, so the seller.
So the seller of the property, owner of, of the, the lots.
Do we have bonds left?
The previous owner of the lots.
We don't have.
What's the bank?
But there's no legal.
Is the bank?
Was the bank.
Was the bank.
Exactly.
This fellow bought from the bank.
Who sold, okay.
Yeah, it was, it was hometown bank.
Yeah, and there's no legal onus on the seller to let the buyer know of the conditions of the property.
That's what I'm saying.
It's on the buyer to go to the town hall and say, are there any conditions, or they can look it up online.
I would recommend that that be.
So if he wants to avoid a lawsuit, then he needs to fix the rest of the road that, that, on the other end of High Crest. If he can, well, if he's selling lots, he can afford to put in a cul-de-sac.
Alls I can say is, my recommendation would be for the board to address that issue now, rather than later. Obviously, later you will have no.
How can we address that issue? How can we do that?
We can send a letter to.
We'll be addressing it in court, yeah, I mean, I'm not, Jerry's a hundred percent right, don't get me wrong, but these bills, they bought, they own the properties now, they don't, they're not under contract, they own them, because they were told this.
They bought at their own risk, world worth.
Well, no, actually, the first one did due diligence and, um, at the time, he, he even came to bill here at the town, there was no, there was nothing, there was no issue at the time, or nobody was aware of the issue at the time, so, I guess he was told, yeah, you can get permits, before he bought the lots, he bought the lots in like July. Now he owns the lots, the one that's trying to get a permit now.
The interesting part also, not to disrupt you, Randy, but in that workings of this whole process that we went through, you went through, the site plan had actually expired. All of this time went by and when he came to me, it actually, when I came up, Randy did the research and found that it expired in July. So it was actually
He even asked, requested the extension.
You know, when that extension was requested, and I'm not pointing any fingers, don't take this wrong, I'm just stating from my viewpoint, I would think at that point, you would look at it and they're gonna be looking for an extension on that site plan. That's the time you look at it and a revision is necessary to approve that. We need these changes adopted in the new site plan. Not just an ext- sign off and give them another year. I guess I'm maybe being a little critical of you, I don't mean it to be.
I tend to agree with you, I think we should review site plans at
I think that that needs to be a step that you
We had that a couple of meetings ago, and I gotta agree with that a hundred percent, that these things that are going on for years and years and years.
The Yankee Diner, that that site plan, it had been so long, we need to physically, and and when that comes up next year, I'm I'm gonna say that again. We need to physically re- review these site plans again to make sure that they're still viable and that they're still
We also should have a standard, I know when we get new plans, we we chime everybody in. But we should have a standard policy on these, when, when, when we have, um, extensions or anything else going on. Maybe we need to communicate, kinda shoot an email around, whatever the, whatever, to just to make sure, maybe even make it a policy that kinda goes out to everybody, um, including the selectmen, everybody, is there an issue? Would they want an extension, we're voting on it, you know, chime up before this date so we can kinda
Just to put a nail on that, you're exactly right. And I'd go further, just stating another case, Hammond Woods is actually, two thousand one, the initial site plan was put in.
Oh, yeah.
Two thousand fifteen, the builder that's in progress and now is trying to finish. He got a renewal. No, it should have been a revisit. Let's, I mean, we're talking fourteen years went by and all the codes and regulations and everything else that were adopted in that timeframe never were addressed. And I'm not raising my voice or critical of you people saying this. I'm saying that I think everyone
Standard practice for years and years and years, you're exactly right.
Be more proactive in the, in the, the, especially on the renewal part. When there's a renewal, maybe you have a standard.
So we've been starting, remember, you know how we started creating like a book of policies, sort of like we have all these new like internal policies, not bylaws, but internal, let's, let's work on also writing that up as a, a, a policy for these. For any extensions, we need to get all of the major bullets, even concentrate, everybody.
And maybe do a site visit, I mean, I think it's an excellent idea, rather than just rubber stamp these like we have them.
I think it's, yeah, especially with some of these been going on all the time, like the way you brought in, uh, Green Gold and Yankee Crossing, I think we really need, explain to us why we gotta keep giving this to you, you know, where are you at with this?
Do we charge for an extension?
No, we do not.
So is that something that we need to consider if we, if that we charge for an extension, because if, if it's this much admin work that's gonna go into it, should there be a, a, I mean, I'm not talking
Dollar fee or something, right?
Nothing, nothing, nothing giant, but, but, um, something to cover the admin cost. And, um, if, if you happen to go up there, and maybe if the site visit from you, and you go up there and there's something that you go, holy mackerel, and you have to bring in an engineer, you know, you have to call Mike and say, hey, like, I think something is bad here, um, then we need to, we need to
Oh, it's an excellent point, because let's just pretend Zorbas was undercut, was, um, asking for extension after extension after extension. Treehouse, in the meantime, goes in, well, traffic increases exponentially in between, we never revisit that, so we're like, oh, sure, no problem, the sight lines are fine, when in actuality, they're not, and that's a very broad, I mean, that's a very big example. But something like that could happen, and you know, if there's a subdivision off the street from Treehouse, now all of a sudden again, tr- um, traffic is something big, and or maybe there's, um, road erosion down the street, or maybe you just, you never know. And I think that's an excellent point that we never thought of before, because we don't deal with that side of things.
I hate you, and I do, I hate the results.
And as far as Hammond Hill goes, I'm just kinda like, at this point, be happy if it's done, because I wasn't sure it was ever gonna get done.
I think Jerry was probably like when Tim first bought it back in fifteen, that he should have been back here saying, what are you gonna do with this, you know?
Well, I think it, I mean, let's just
Although I think there should be a policy that any time
There ought to be a policy, any, anytime a site plan goes three years, it doesn't just trigger a renewal, it triggers a review. From, you know, this, this
I would agree.
And I think that would be very worthwhile because of what I've seen.
So we know we wanna add that to our discussion and make, c- create a formal policy around those. If we write them up, we can sit and review them and tweak them, but let's get them written up. Um, I think that's really important, because we get more and we get a lot of these extensions, so.
Exactly.
Thank you.
I'm glad to have some input, I'm glad that you've taken my input. And the last thing I would ask is, again, I said I'm here for guidance, and I really am. What would you suggest how I react to authorizing another building, another driveway?
I, I think they need to come in front of us because I, I think that
I've already told them that, I said, look, I'm not the authority on what I'm preaching, I'm telling it, I think we have a problem.
I think we can stand behind you on that one and, and make sure that what's into that, at, at least it's better than it is now, acceptable to, to meet safety requirements, especially, you know, at the end
I was gonna ask, can we send a certified letter?
He won't answer the phone, he won't answer his email, he doesn't care, he's like, if I lose it, I lose it, I don't care.
So even if we say that we're gonna, we're doing like a season, he can't sell any more properties, because we're gonna, I don't know what we can do to
Well, he can sell all he wants, but nobody's gonna build on it, and, and if he wants to get lawsuits from the, the people that he buys from, then, then he's, he's gonna need to deal with that.
Who do, whose interests do we represent, the town? So I think that approach needs to just be applied, and it's not, I feel bad for the developers, the builders.
Certified letter to him, whatever the address is, and I'm saying that, that's it, the, that, the town. Um, we just coordinate, coordinate, I don't know if current
I'm starting to get really lost on what we're gonna be asking him to do. Are we talking about the original cul-de-sac that never got built, are we talking about the one that's getting built next month?
Well, that one's taken care of, but
There wasn't an original cul-de-sac.
But, but
There is no original cul-de-sac.
Yeah, and, and sometimes, somebody's gonna have to at least fix what was started before any other houses get built. And it, and if they don't wanna do that, then, then fine, don't build.
But we want, we want the developer right here, if we can.
But, you know, I, I think it's a small enough thing where if he's got two lots, to, to build a cul-de-sac at the end of High Crest on the, on the, the short part, seems like a, a, a good trade-off to be able to build the two houses that he wants on those, those lots.
And, and he's paid for the plan to engineer that already that we've reviewed, so if I could just
But he's, he's doing it, but we're not talking about that
I think we have too many conversations.
About the short end of, of High Crest, so High Crest goes up the hill, dead ends, and then it comes up off of
Hammond Hill.
Hammond Hill and Dead End.
That's another, I mean, I, I've had, I, I struggle with this project too, because I didn't even know when it expired, and I do my best to try and track. Maybe you guys have seen my spreadsheet that I created, and I didn't know it was, it had expired. And there was always talk about them extinguishing those other portions of the project, but it never officially happened. So when, when I saw this plane come across my desk, like, well, what are they doing here, is this permanent, is this temporary? And it's, it's gotta be temporary, because they aren't changing the right of way in those lots where that ball, cul-de-sac bulb is gonna be.
It's gotta be temporary, but what they've got there now is horrible.
Right, but we treated it and reviewed it as if it's gonna remain permanent, so.
That's gonna get done, I mean, the builder, he has to get, he has to do that to get the COs on the house, he's got buyers for those houses.
Sure, now we've got two other houses that wanna go in, and there's another problem with that, that subdivision, like, like you were saying, there's
But we're talking about two different things, that's the problem. Jerry's talking about, make the builder come in and fix the
The other end.
Cul-de-sac. Well, we've given the builder permits saying, you fix this cul-de-sac and you're gonna get your CO on this house. Now the town, and he's got buyers. Now the town turns around and says, yeah, never mind, we're not gonna do that, we're gonna make the builder fix that other cul-de-sac. We just set ourselves up for lawsuits.
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying that, that's the, the builder for the new lots.
And I mean, I understand why he's asking, he's right, but if we
Right.
We're, we're
So we've got two different builders here. We've got the builder that's currently building the two lots now, and then you said that there's two other lots.
No, there's four, there's four lots on each side, three lots on one side, four lots on the other side, they're owned by two different builders. Neither one of them is the developer that owns the land.
Sure, sure.
Owns the subdivision.
We made a deal with one of the builders.
We're dealing with one builder took it upon himself to
Now the other builder
So that he could
I, I may be confused.
He put in the cul-de-sac built by High Crest, not Henry Vista.
So the two houses that are going in the top of High Crest right now are one builder or those two separate builders? That's the one builder.
He's the one that he folks
Okay, okay.
To
Okay, so builder number one has two houses going in.
Then we told he couldn't.
Builder number two
Told him he couldn't.
Builder number two just bought two lots and he wants to put houses in.
He owns three lots.
Three lots, so we need, we need to work with builder number two to fix the rest of that subdivision, at least to a point where it, it doesn't meet the subdivision, but it's safe.
Isn't it, isn't it an unlikely scenario that you're dealing with the builders who are buying the lots? Yeah, i- isn't it typical or normal to be dealing with the owner of the site?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there's the, in the regular part of it to start. I think Randy's correct, and I, that's the impression I got from the owner of the site, that I don't care. That's the impression was given to us by the builder. And apparently, he came representing the owner's interests, he had a letter stating he had that authority. Now, a second light bulb goes off in my mind, like, okay, this is nutty, but maybe you folks have dealt with this.
We're kinda
You would like to see the project move forward.
If we look at builder number two and say, sorry, we're not issuing any more building permits or allowing anybody until somebody takes it upon themselves to at least fix what's broken here. Not, not completely repaired, but fix it. It's part of the subdivision.
I, I understand that, but say, okay, so for me to build houses over here, you want me to fix that road a quarter mile way over there?
Broken subdivision plate.
But that guy can build houses without an issue.
Yeah, and but, well
He had to fix part of the road to do it.
He had to fix part of the road.
He's fixing the road, he's got the houses on, you're asking this guy to fix the road that has nothing to do with him.
Let's, we can throw it out there and see what he says. You don't, you don't think, you don't think he
Thirty-second conversation.
Really?
Yeah.
Then he doesn't get building permits.
Right, and I'm
Then that's, that's what you're saying.
But then, right, now the town's open, because if I'm gonna let Billy build houses on this side, but I'm not gonna let Sam build houses on this side.
Well, that part I don't think we have a problem with yet, because the guy knows that he's gonna do that cul-de-sac in March.
Right.
But if we, and I'm, I, I don't have the answer, I'm trying, trying to figure out the answer here, but to hold those builders up now
Right.
Builder number two, not builder number one, builder number one's already been approved and, and he's doing the work.
Is there a safety issue?
Builder number two that wants to start building, that needs, that, that, we, we, we're not allowing any more houses up there, that, that, that cul-de-sac is full.
Yeah, let's, I agree with
That cul-de-sac is full, the, the subdivision is full. That subdivision from, from, uh, High Crest, that end of High Crest to the other end is, is, is done. No other houses along that whole stretch, until the other side gets fixed.
Well, I would agree, especially in this building season.
You have building laws, that people are paying taxes on, and now the planning board's gonna say, oh, you can't build on that cul-de-sac?
That's right.
It's full? We, they're paying taxes, it's building lots, and now we're telling them they can't build? That's completed? My point is, I agree, the developer's the one that's gonna fix this, but to tell this builder that you can't build on this road over here until this road over here that has nothing to do with this fix, it's not his problem, I'm saying
I say until the subdivision is brought up to a, a minimum standard.
I, I thought there were rules and regs pertaining to, at what point are we gonna allow this developer to start selling lots and putting homes on them? I thought there was a minimum requirement, and I base this on my eighteen years of running this department, signing driveway permits, which start the process. I don't believe I've ever been asked to sign off on a driveway permit until there was at least the cul-de-sac in and the base coat was down. That's to their benefit, it's our benefit, everything's all set to go.
That's why they have the big bonds, so we release
Where do we have our bond in this?
Small. What's the amount?
You remember what's going on, I don't know.
What's, what's the approximate cost of the cul-de-sac on the short end of High Crest?
I would say that's more in Mike's domain, if he's willing to offer.
Or to, to, to take the other end of High Crest.
I wouldn't wanna throw a number out tonight, I
Yeah, I would have to look it up, because this thing's been since two thousand
Is the bond even close?
That, that phase three road, which is what that is, is bonded to a point, and I don't, I don't remember what that point is, it's the top of the hill.
No, I'm talking about the one that, that's off of Hammond Hill.
Oh, that's, I mean, that's a public way now, part of that's a public way.
But because that project was phased in, is it not still part of that site plan, the original site plan? So it is under the authority of the first ones, which there should have been a bond on. It should never have been signed off, they should still be paying on that bond and making it inactive, so if they're not, okay.
Do we send a certified letter to the developer saying, here on, I guess, for this second, for these two, for this new people who, for this person who are already closing the lots and they're already looking for driveway permits, we might be kind of, um, but if there is a certified letter that goes out to the owner saying, don't sell, we're not, you will not get any more permits, like, these guys, we have to now, because they already bought the lots. But, but as of the date, if we send a certified letter saying, hey, don't sell these lots, because you're not
We don't, we don't have to give them permits.
I, I know, but I'm saying out of reasonableness, because there, there's not any formal commu- I mean, technically, we could start and we, there could be a lawsuit. Like, technically, we could say, we could sa- say, please don't issue the, the, the driveway permits, because we like, we need to finish this, but because the first people, that person did and they had to fix something.
Came in and, and made a re- a request of the planning board to accept his offer of main, of establishing a cul-de-sac. At his, he's gonna be responsible for that before he gets an OC on any, any of them houses. I hope that was in the agreement that was done here. So I, I don't look at him the same as I look at the new one that's coming in requesting. If you have, if, if it's, you know, a situation where it's not at the stage where we need to offer driveway permits or, or authorize them, or I need to authorize them, then that's where it stands, that, that needs to be in before we, I authorize any of them. That's, I'm asking, that's would be my recommendation.
Are you talking about the one where the houses are being, but that cul-de-sac?
Oh, you're talking, I think you're talking about the other end.
No, I'm saying that
This place is a disaster, you're like, what the hell?
I'm a little confused here.
Okay, I, I think you are, but
This is a gigantic mess.
Just for the record, Randy may, you may be right with this, okay, now you're telling him he's responsible for off of the old section, he's responsible for that cul-de-sac. I'm not a planner, I've never been involved in the, the review or the, you know, the adoption of a, a site plan. But it seems to me that was a phased-in site plan. That includes that section that comes off of Hammond Hill that's been there for twenty years. There still should be a bond that covers the work that has not been accepted by the town, which would be the section we're doing.
Section three.
On the other section, which originally just would have been another phase. But at this point, because you accept the recommendation of the builder that came in under the authority of the owner, I would consider that's a phase by itself. Typically, I would not authorize any driveway permits at this point of the project, where there is no cul-de-sac and a short answer to your question, Pat, about the safety issue. There's an absolute safety issue when there is no acceptable turnaround at the end of any subdivision or any road. So yes, there is a safety issue.
So you
And I suggest
Send a certified letter saying, get your button here, there's a safety issue, we're gonna pull down
I suggest to you that there's a safety issue on the other one too.
I am lost here, the, the first cul-de-sac is gonna be built. Are we talking about this cul-de-sac on High Crest now, or the cul-de-sac coming off Hammond Hill Road? The, the builder is going to build the cul-de-sac, so, and the second builder understands, you might have to wait till that one's done.
True.
My issue is, are we telling that second builder, now you gotta wait till the one that's coming off Hammond Hill Road is done?
Yeah, 'cause that's part of
No, he, he, the thing is, is he doesn't have to wait.
The second one.
The second one doesn't have to wait, that's the wrong terminology, the correct terminology would be, you need to speak to the person that sold you these lots. There were conditions, and that was
And until he finishes the other side, we're not gonna issue
To be done before you can build, I, I'm
So then he could kick him to court and try to get him to do it, or he could, you know, take it upon himself to do it himself and save himself a lot of trouble. But either way
Needs to be done.
And needs to be done until any more driveway permits are issued in that subdivision.
But we made it very, more complicated than it was, if you want the permits, get the job done and we, then
That's kinda what I've been saying, that, that if you wanna, if you wanna build, make sure this gets done, whether you do it yourself or you go to, 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 and, you know, the, the developer or the, the owner of the land and try to get your money back.
Suggestion? Just as a suggestion, maybe, you know, call the bond, do the work, and then lien the pro- all the properties in the subdivision for the residual value of the work.
If we have to.
Is, is that possible? I mean, that's
It's been done once, in my, my tenure here, it's been done once.
We just don't, these things drag on for decades.
Lien, lien which properties, all the properties for the, that are in the subdivision.
All the homes in the sub.
That whole Highcrest, the whole, the whole Highcrest Road, because you've got a section of Highcrest that's on an unfinished road. And you've got the other section, it's a high Highcrest and low, low Highcrest, I guess we could refer to.
It's all part of one subdivision approval, it should be all, it should be all.
Everything, and, and.
Gotta get at least brought up to a minimum standard, that whole subdivision before anything else.
Homeowners getting lawyers to fight that developer, that's what's gonna happen, it's gonna be, it's gonna be, um, it's gonna be us keeping the town safe, right?
Or they all pitch it together and just get it done. Which, like I said, it brings it to a minimum standard, it's never gonna get connected, but right now, it's, it's, it's not even safe.
We need it safe, we need it, we need it, and we, we just can't have a, just a mess up there, that's a, that's.
I mean, when you're plowing, you gotta go down and just back all the way back out to.
Well, it's not an accepted road yet, so we don't plow.
They don't plow that, either, either.
Obviously, we wouldn't plow until the top coat of asphalt's on and the top coat.
I'm talking about lower Highcrest.
You're talking, oh, you know what?
Lower Highcrest.
This is probably gonna throw a real wrench into the hole.
It's not approved.
It's an accepted town road, to the point of where there should have been a cul-de-sac.
So it should never have been accepted.
It should never have been accepted that way, that issue should have been addressed at that time. That, so many feet off of Hammond Hill, to the point where they left off and were initially by design. Gonna continue up over the hill at some phase. It was accepted as a public way to that point, with no turnaround, a gravel area that I have to maintain every year. I've had numerous discussions in here with the planner over that, we've talked, I've talked to the bank. And again, I, it usually doesn't, it's not helpful to look back. What we need to do is look ahead, how are we gonna, are we gonna just?
It's a reasonable point, it's a, it's a, it's a fix, right?
You know, I just don't wanna walk away from the issue at the old Highcrest, we'll call it that, and just act like it isn't a problem.
It's part of the subdivision and.
It's a problem that I'm gonna have to address with people's money, and I don't think it's right, I think it can be addressed at this point.
Until that subdivision is brought up to a minimum standard, the subdivision as a whole, the whole Highcrest Road, both ends from, from one end to the other. That was part of the subdivision, until that's brought up to a minimum standard. Not even, that, that, what was approved, but a minimum standard, there's no more building permitting.
Well, let's check the bond too, I mean, let, let's check to see what's on bond, let's check to see if we can make this right without going crazy. Let's, um, agree to continue the discussion, let's try to contact the builder and say.
The bond won't be enough to build, to finish it.
Well, you know, I, I'm doubtful, and this is actually another reason why not to have extensions, because. Time goes by, things cost more money, or, okay, you want another extension?
That's why I think it's very.
We know whatever Mike, Mike think was appropriate in today's dollars, you know.
When we looked at this back in October, I, I wish I had that number in my head, there was no way with that, that number would not finish the rest of that.
I, I, I remember it was like three thousand dollars or something.
Well, possibly Mike, you could answer it all.
No, it's, it's a, it's a number, but, but it's, it's, it's gonna be hundreds of thousands of dollars to finish up there.
If it's a phased in plan, is the bond phased in, is that how that would have worked?
Yeah, so it's a third phase, but the thing is, the other piece, the other pieces were all the way done, so the bond, I don't think the bond was actually released.
To know what that whole bond is on that whole subdivision.
Maybe this is a.
Well, there's no bond, the portions that are public ways now, those bonds are gone.
Even though they weren't finished, we cut, I mean, I, I.
The only bond that's in place is for that phase that they're working on.
High Highcrest.
And that would have, had to have been reapplied recently, correct? When the time of expiration, that would have been reviewed as part of the renewal?
No, we didn't.
It wasn't a renewal, was there?
It's still not, it's, it's an expired.
I'm asking the question, I guess.
I think it was extended, but it, it, you know.
So this is a mess.
Well, let's look into it and then we'll talk about it, but rather than stay here and guess and guess and guess.
So we're gonna, we're gonna look at the bond amount, look at the, this, this, this option, right? Of when we, we actually pull the bond and do the whole.
And I'm not trying to put you off, Jerry, I just think we, that way we have knowledge, and then we can discuss it with what we wanna do with the facts at hand.
And on February nineteenth, we will have this on our agenda and we'll make a, a decision on how we wanna proceed and it'll be. The way to proceed to get it done.
What meeting was that?
The nineteenth, February nineteenth, so we'll continue it, we'll have all of our facts, we'll have the bond amounts, we'll have, um, hopefully like a Russ, you'll be able to do like a.
Estimate to finish that.
A rough estimate to actually finish.
For the, for the cul-de-sac?
Lower Highcrest.
Well, I, I need a plan, I don't, I'm, what's the plan?
So the original subdivision plan, right, is that what we're looking?
No, there was never a cul-de-sac designed, that was supposedly gonna walk over the hill and tie in.
So then we gotta get our, kinda, kinda get our deep, our facts together on how, I mean. We need to finish it, so that means we're gonna have to actually hire, the town would actually have to hire an engineer to finish it to standard.
You comfortable with a ballpark somewhere between here and here, even if it's a big ballpark, just, you know, is it, is it?
To construct a cul-de-sac?
Twenty thousand or is it two hundred thousand?
I can certainly estimate it, but.
Yeah, that's all we're looking for.
We know, we know, we, we know.
For both, for the one that's on upper.
We're not gonna make you do it for that price.
I'd be happy to get that price actually. I don't get prevailing reach.
The, um. That and then, let's just, let's just have a goal in our mind to get this, this done, one more thing off of the.
Exactly, once we have.
The second builder, I mean, he, he won't be happy, I'll speak to him again, he knows we're having this conversation.
Well, he already got his permits, he already got.
No, 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 the second builder won't.
I mean the second.
But he's bought the property, he owns, he now owns.
He's owned it since last summer, yes.
Has he?
He's sitting back waiting to see what, apparently he's not in need of starting, the other developer, the other builder was in need of starting it. Or starting a lawsuit with the builder, the owner.
He wants to start building one house and.
So he may not, he may not have the incentive to do what the first guy did.
Well, we need, we need to.
I don't know why he had to.
If this is the beginning, like the, the, the starting process to get it done, you know, he might have his feelings hurt, but at the end of the day, he'll have a much nicer. You know, the whole, the whole, his, his lots will be worth more, his houses will be worth more, if it's, if it's put, if it's finished and it's nice and people aren't going up there and seeing a pick. That it, you know what I'm saying, it's, it's.
Well, that ends getting done anyway.
Yeah, that ends getting done, it's lower Highcrest.
So but that, but that can be factored in in the total, the total price to fix, right? So if that's done, what else do we need to do to make everything completely done? To the satisfaction of, of having everything accepted, right? So we'll factor in what we have for the bond and if, if that, if, if truly. Putting the lien on the whole entire subdivision is what we need to do, then we, we move ahead and then, and then eventually it'll be done, at least it'll be a, the beginning of, of. The, the completion, right?
I drove up on there on Sunday cuz I was unfamiliar with that, and I remember we had talked about it before, so I, I wanted to see what was up there, it's a mess, I, I, yeah.
Oh, it's a big mess.
I don't know how you plow it with it, with, you know.
Well, like I said, we don't plow. That, the hill up is still private property in my eyes.
Cuz you'd be losing plows.
No, I wouldn't do it.
But what if there's a, I mean, what about like medical, um, what if someone has a heart attack out there, what if there's a fire up there?
The, the builder up there now plans to.
The two homes that are being constructed now. He's made the agreement with this board.
To fix it.
Yep, to fix it.
The cul-de-sac in. And, and get the base down, as far as I know, that's the agreement.
That's a small, a small fix of the whole.
And he was gonna topcoat that, that's, that's actually, that, that part of it too, cuz it's just a base coat on, on the road now.
Right now, it's a base coat, all the structures are.
All the structures are raised.
He's gonna pave down a little bit till he can plow.
So I guess we need to look at that too, was, was that?
Cul-de-sac standards, is that correct?
So, wa- was that part of the, the, the site plan or his plan before, or his agreement was to topcoat that road or, or?
No, he isn't.
Well, that'd be done when those lots are all developed, you wouldn't wanna double floor that.
Okay, okay, so that's still under the original developer, that's never gonna do that.
Dennis, do you have a comment?
The gentleman that did the Henry Vista's agreed to resolve that, came to us as well, and he commented that he was going to resolve the issue on. The lower end of Highcrest, that cul-de-sac, to our specifications and in agreement with you in, in your office.
I know that he met with fire. That was part of the design that Mike, did you approve that design of the? The new Highcrest, let's call it, you approve that, he's gonna do it.
Talking about the other one.
And the one off of.
No, not the one on the other end of Highcrest, on Henry Vista's, we agreed with that pertaining, well, and he was gonna hammerhead that. For our trucks to be able to turn around, even though we'll never drive.
Not on Henry Vista.
On Henry Vista's.
That's the first I've heard of any type of turnaround.
But then, we agreed to not do the hammerhead, because we're not gonna put a truck there, but he is gonna resolve the issue on. The Hammond Hill end of Highcrest.
He said that?
He did, and I'm trying to think of his name, I, I can look through my. Yes, yeah, but he said he was working with us with our.
He's gonna do both, both cul-de-sacs?
No, not the top end, just the bottom.
Top one's where his houses are, that's what we need to finish for his houses.
That was my impression, that was. He never discussed that with, with the fire department, he discussed Henry Vista's.
I thought that plan that we approved was, was on the high Highcrest.
Yes, that's what his houses are, why would he finish?
I'm wondering if there was a misunderstanding between you two, I'm not saying that he didn't say it, but I'm saying.
Alright, so next meeting, we pull the, we get all the facts and all the plans, right, next meeting?
Maybe we invite him to the meeting as well.
Yeah, invite, invite the home, the, them, bring the back in. Oh, they didn't call, they, they invited tonight, so let's pull, maybe they found out how expensive it was gonna be.
Or you know what, we can pull the tape from when he was on tape and see what he agreed to with us and compare it to what he agreed to.
The, the, the plan that we looked at was the high Highcrest, so we, that was the plan that we approved, I had not heard anything about, I, one cul-de-sac.
First one to bring that up.
I was gonna say, one cul- we, we reviewed one cul-de-sac on Highcrest, which was the upper one. And Henry Vista, yeah, really?
We, I don't have a map with him because.
I'm still, I'm confused.
Okay, so maybe, yeah, maybe he was confused too, but.
I don't, maybe he confused whatever he was thinking to the fire department, but I know his houses are on.
Upper Highcrest.
High Highcrest, yeah, so, I mean, it'd be no reason to finish the other end cuz we won't be able to still get a C O on his houses cuz there's no cul-de-sac over there.
I am, I usually confuse people and I'm confused, I'm just saying that.
Did we rename that road because that's gotta be confusing.
Maybe Lowcrest.
Lowcrest, Lowcrest, please, you know, Lowcrest.
What confusion is this, two Highcrests?
Number six.
But actually, I mean, I have, we'll have to investigate the bond, the bond amount might be our savior to help.
So, by the, for the next meeting, we'll have a set of plans to look at, the bond, people will be communicated, they all can come in and be part of the discussion if they would like to be part of the discussion for, for the, for the decision. Can't wait.
Any old subdivisions I can drive around and look at? Anything else that's, that's coming up, so I can get an idea of what it looks like before we see the plans?
Um, yeah, next time.
So I will wait two weeks before I authorize them.
Thank you for giving us the super long meeting.
At least two weeks, we need to resolve this before.
I did speak to him today and I said, you know, if it's gonna have, at the very least, that cul-de-sac was gonna have to go in, he, he, you know, I said, I am the thing.
Was that Mike's fam or?
No, Sammy, I spoke to him today, the one that wants the driveway.
At all, except he's bought them lots.
He owns, he's owned the lots.
So, apparently, I explained to him that if that's what has to happen, that's what has to happen, you know, the cul-de-sac's gotta be completely refitted before we issue any building permit. At the very least, if that's what, and if it's March fifteenth, we'll have to wait.
Mike even understands that.
Well, Mike does, cuz he had the permits on the house, Sammy's the one that wants.
I won't sign an O C for him until there's occupancy's.
Right, so I said, it's in Mike's best interest, he, you know, and I understand that weather's playing a factor in it, but it's a month, you know, so.
Okay.
He understa- so.
I could, I could throw another monkey wrench in this too if you want, but maybe we won't.
He's still a ways away from finishing those houses, so he's.
There's a sister in that's not done up there either.
Per the fire department, and I actually confirmed that with Kirk today, and that has to be done before they can get a C O on it.
Do they know that?
Yes.
And again, that's on the owner of the site plan, not of these builders.
Well, the, the, the builder number one has, has taken upon himself to, to finish that stuff so that he can sell his houses.
Amazing, he must be working at a heck of a margin.
He's, yeah, yeah.
Justify taking on that at a expense.
I think they unloaded the lot cheap.
They've got a great view of the pipe there too, so.
Yeah, I know.
Well, again, it's a huge builder's mar- it's a huge seller's market right now, so they probably got the lots cheap, they're gonna throw up a house. And they're sell, if you look at the assessed value in the town of Charleston, it's, houses are selling for about a hundred thousand dollars over that. So I mean, it's, and they are not staying on the market, they, you're talking seven, eight offers over within twenty-four hours of houses going up cuz there's no inventory. In that three hundred, four hundred thousand dollar range, and so, and the faster that builder can get the house up, the more money he can make, and if he's doing the work himself. I don't wanna say instantly, but I mean, it, it's a cash market right now, yeah, so.
He may already have the houses sold, he may already have.
Yeah, oh, he may, yeah.
The first builder has the two houses sold, I know he does, I don't know about the second builder.
But that's what I mean, so right now it's cash in his hand, once they're up.
Yeah, if they can't get an O C though, it's a problem.
Yeah.
It's a problem for everybody and I hope we take advantage of it, that's all I.
Make everybody pull their funds and get it done.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Is that it?
You walked into a doozy tonight. So.
I think I sat through a long one.
He could have sent you a motor pass at the school, I'm sorry.
This is nothing compared to B G G or five oh eight. Um, zoning, the zoning bylaw diagnostic review, um.
Go ahead.
I signed, is that, we're talking the same.
Signed the contract.
I signed the contract today, so, um, we'll get that going as soon as possible, we'll push that, that'll, that, it'd be like normal planning board business, like. Zoning bylaws?
We're actually going to start, um, trying to set up workshop meetings where we're strictly gonna focus on that. The first one is March fourth, Ron Baron, who's the principal planner over at C M R, he's gonna be our go-to person, our contact, point of contact. Um, so, our first meeting, we're gonna be throwing around ideas of what we want to do and everything, so if you have any ideas, suggestions, you know, we're gonna have to decide where. What avenues we're going to take, I mean, I think we have a couple of different things, one, we wanna look at the map, you know.
Yeah, the maps.
Me visiting the zoning, you change that definitely in definitions and, um, that's another area, we have to, you know, get some more specific language in there.
Okay, if you have zoning bylaw books with lots and lots of sticky notes, like me bring them.
Hey, Mike, good seeing you. Thanks for coming.
Delete meetings. So, um, and we will have a workshop.
Yeah, first workshop's gonna be March fourth, so that we, we won't have any ampliations then, I would just be a workshop working with.
Same bedtime, same bedtime, seven o'clock?
Yes.
Make sure they don't plan candidates next that night.
I remember that happening.
I don't need to go to campus today.
Yeah, you do, cuz that's where the debate is, that's, you know.
Under all the people running out of host?
That's when you get up there and you get to. Get questions from the audience.
That's gonna be fun.
Alright, discuss your planning director E D C.
Um, so that's just always on the agenda, I, eventually, oh, so we, since we have our, we have our T A here, um. We, the planning board has proposed, like, back in the past, the planning director used to also be the E D C director. It was like a, like a, like a small stipend increase of salary, it just makes sense, I don't know, what you've seen in, in other towns. To have, because he knows all the development, he knows the zoning, he knows, so when people come to the E D C, just, it, it, it worked very well in the past, so. We, um, went in front of the select board, they didn't have an issue, but they wanted to wait for you to arrive to discuss the issue, so we'll, I'm, I'm sure soon we'll be in front of your board. To kinda decide on what makes.
Yeah, I think that was a safe struc- safe structure that, you know, my experience at Potter was that we established the economic development director under the planning. Uh, under the planning, you know, boards, or the planning director's description, so essentially, they take the point on. All economic development stuff, which is just.
There, there are anyways, there, you know, it, it just makes sense to.
Yeah, I mean, I'm. You, you're probably not familiar, but the, the Economic Development Commission hasn't met since the middle of last, last summer.
It's been a long time.
Because it's, it's fallen apart and they've really like not had anybody take point on it and everything, it's been a long time since they've even had a. I mean, it, it's actually been over two years they've had a meeting with a quorum, so, I'm really concerned about them. You know, just falling apart because it's been so long since.
Yeah, they're making, they're probably willing to be re- new reappointments.
Should, should we reach out for new members too, that they, that they, what I mean, there's maybe other people.
At this point in time is, who knows, you know, I mean, we had some very active members that, um, and I think that they'll still be willing to do it, it's kinda like everything just kinda.
Well, what happened for a couple of meetings is, you thought you were gonna have quorum, you'd show up and then there wasn't quorum, so people started, stopped showing up. Because if they had another meeting or anything, it wasn't worth their time anymore, if they were gonna go to a meeting only to be turned away, so. It, it's not that they didn't care, it's just that, um, they weren't being effective, and so they were putting their time elsewhere. And so I think if we revamp that and we make it, um, and we might even wanna adjust the time, because it was in the middle of the day, which worked great for some of us on some months, but not all of us on all months, so.
Right, and that's something we'll explore with all the members, you know, is day better for you or is night better for you, you know, whatever it ends up being, so.
So that, that will go in front of the board of, the, the board of selection, we can actually reach out if you wanna, uh, uh, um, send an email to Mary and.